When you try your best but you don't succeed. When you get what you want but not what you need. When you feel so tired but you can't sleep. When the tears come streaming down your face. Cause you lose something you can't replace. When you love someone but it goes to waste. What could be worse? Lights will guide you home. And ignite your bones. And I will try to fix you. I will try, I will try to fix you. Higher than ever, down below. When you're too in love to let it go. But if you never try, you'll never know. Just what you want. Lights will guide you home. And ignite your bones. And I will try to fix you. I will try, I will try to fix you. Higher than ever, down below. When you're too in love to let it go. But if you never try, you'll never know. Just what you want. Lights will guide you home. And ignite your bones. And I will try to fix you. Tears streaming down your face. When you lose something you cannot replace. Tears streaming down your face. I promise you, I will learn from my mistakes. Tears streaming down your face. Lights will guide you home. And ignite your bones. And I will try to fix you.[1149.11]
Council meeting of April 19th, 2016. We will now reconvene our meeting. Mr. Munoz, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have one item to report out of closed session. In connection with the closed session, item A, anticipated litigation, the council authorized our office to proceed forward with litigation in connection with the Silver Living issue. We're not in a position to disclose further facts at this time until after we have the complaint on file and the information becomes public. But I wanted to report that we will be moving forward on that. Along that same vein, I was going to mention this in my city attorney comments later on, but I'll just mention it to you now, that last week, the city manager on behalf of the council sent out a letter in support of AB 2772, which is a bill aimed at regulation of so-called Silver Living Homes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Schoeffel and followed by the invocation, so please remain standing.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. Holy Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the great city of Dana Point and the way that you have guided and blessed it. Or we thank you for the people and ask that you would strengthen the families, strengthen the businesses, strengthen our schools, strengthen our city and our churches. Father, we ask that tonight you would guide us with your wisdom and your love, with your justice and with your mercy, and that in these events you would be praised. Amen.
Amen. Okay, next item on our agenda this evening is Business of the Month, Sandara Salon. Mr. Johnson, will you -- Salon. Did I say? I've already made my first mistake of the evening. Probably be more.
What's a better idea?
I apologize. Rachel, if you would proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the council. I'm pleased to announce the Business of the Month for April 2016, Sandara Salon. Tonight, we are joined by the salon owners Angie Carter and Kim Brooks. Angie and Kim first started their hairstyling careers at a beauty school in Capistrano Beach. Once they graduated from beauty school, they both found jobs in the area, not wanting to leave the beach. They continued to work for 25 years, dreaming of owning their own salon one day. This dream became a reality two and a half years ago when they opened Sandara Salon together. In the first two and a half years, Kim and Angie have seen their business grow and expand to a point where they have almost outgrown the space they have started in. They felt that Dana Point was the perfect location for their salon as it was close to the beach and central to South County residents. It has been great for them to see their vision become a reality through the past years, and they are hoping that it continues on. With their goal of wanting each client to feel beautiful in and out of their salon, Sandara was the perfect name for their salon as it means beautiful. Each client that comes in for any service receives a stress relief treatment to help them relax and enjoy their experience. Within the first two years of being open, Sandara Salon received the 2014 Silver Lantern Award for Best Salon in Dana Point. They are proud to carry the Evita line of products, including products for both hair and skincare. These products are all made by wind-powered factories and are not tested on animals. Through the Evita line, they are able to offer many in-salon classes to their stylists to ensure that they continue to learn and grow to be the best salon they can be. Kim and Angie want to make the world a better and more beautiful place. Through their product line, they are able to do this as they help support clean water, the preservation of oceans and beach cleanups. With April being Earth Month, Sandara is involved with a surf competition called Surf for Clean Water, where they compete against Evita salons to raise money and awareness for the preservation of oceans and clean water. And last year, Sandara Salon won the surf competition. Additionally, they are involved in volunteering and supporting the Mission Viejo Animal Shelter. On behalf of the city council, we would like to congratulate you for being selected as the Business of the Month for April. We wish you many years of continued success.[614.16][614.16](applause)
Well, we'd like to congratulate you on being Business of the Month. And I went to your opening when you first opened up, and what an extraordinary place you guys have there. It's really nice, and you guys provide a great service to the community, and you're a great asset to the community. So we do have a presentation plaque for you. It says Featured Business of the Month, April 2016. The city of Dana Point takes great pleasure in featuring Sandara Salon, not Salon maybe.[666.04][666.04](laughter) On Pacific Coast, Iowa, in Dana Point, and extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month by myself and on behalf of the entire Dana Point City Council and the city of Dana Point. Please, on our behalf, take that plaque. Kim, if you'd like to say a few words maybe?
Just like to say thank you to Dana Point. We love having our business there, and we wanted to thank everybody for our continued success. Would you like to say anything?
Do you have any family members here you'd like to bring up and introduce?
I have my husband, Mark.
Come on up, Mark.[718.32][718.32](applause) Hold that and we'll take another picture. First also has a presentation.
I remember when you ladies came into our chamber office and it was top secret that you were opening up a salon. So I just want to say congratulations, and you guys have been a great asset to Dana Point. And look at you, Business of the Month, that's awesome. I'm presenting you a plaque as well as a year free membership for the chamber, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, other. All right, we have some pins for you. It's been customary to hand out, so if you'd hold on for one second. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is Employee of the Month, Mr. Kevin Evans. I'd like to ask Mr. Schottkevitz to come down and say a few words about the wonderful Mr. Kevin Evans. So I've had a pleasure of knowing you for, what, a year and a half now? You've always helped me keep me on the straight and narrow where I'm supposed to be and where I'm supposed to be at events, so I really appreciate that. And Mr. Schottkevitz is going to add on to that.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tomlinson. Thing special about Kevin is being a department head of community service is a tough lot. This is the guy who dresses up as Santa Claus and puts on the Easter Bunny suit every year so the city manager doesn't have to.[842.82][842.82](laughter) Kevin's one of these people, he truly is a humble servant of the public. He's one of these people that whenever I call him on a 24/7 basis, he always answers on the second ring and says, "I'm on it." So Kevin, we're going to miss you, but I have to say, as much as I hate to see you go, I know that you and your lovely wife Sylvia are going to enjoy your retirement with your grandchildren, and know that Dana Point will always be your home. But again, know that you're leaving with the love of the community for everything that you've done here.
Thank you very much.
Sylvia, why don't you come on up here and join us? Go ahead. Here, you stand up here. I always want to be like the guy on the fight, and I'll just come up behind you. Raise your arm.
What's arm? Okay, thank you. Are you going to wrap me if I say something wrong?
Scared ready to rumble.
All right.
You don't have to hold it.
Wow, I feel like a prop here.[903.66][903.66](laughter) Okay, whereas Kevin Evans was hired by the city of Dana Point in December of 1993 as the Recreation Superintendent. He was promoted to the Recreation Manager in May of 2000. Kevin was promoted to Director of Community Services and Parks in July of 2007. Now, there's a whole list of whereas's here. Let me see. I'll say, whereas Kevin and his staff have provided first-class, five-star activities, such as the Festival of Wales Parade, egg hunts, concerts in the park, Fourth of July fireworks, and many senior activities throughout the year. Kevin and his staff have worked with many community organizations to observe the Vietnam Memorial Wall, Memorial Day, and Veterans Day services. Whereas Kevin has worked tirelessly to ensure that Dana Point is one of the most successful and flawless recreational and event activities, maintaining all the parks, medians to the highest possible standard, providing enjoyable settings for private weddings and anniversaries, to attractive brack drops for the Summer Concert Series and the Dana Point Barbecue Championship. And now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Dana Point, myself as mayor, hereby congratulate, and the city council hereby congratulate Kevin Evans upon his selection as the city of Dana Point Employee of the Month for April 2016, and express heartfelt appreciation for his devoted service to the citizens of Dana Point, and express our sincere thanks for his exemplary service to our community.[993.82][993.82](applause) Thank you, Mr. Schottkevitz, for providing support for me. I appreciate that.[1007.82][1007.82](laughter) You're not done yet.
Well, first off, Mayor Tomlinson and city council, thank you for the opportunity to serve you as an employee of the city of Dana Point. And thank you to Doug and all of his staff. We've really got an excellent group of people here, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I'm very humbled by the award. I have to share with you that I could not do this alone. I have got one of the finest Parks and Recreation staffs that you could ever assemble, and two of them are here this evening. Would I be able to bring them up? Brian, come on up, Monique.[1091.16][1091.16](applause) Brian is our Park Manager, and Monique is our Recreation Coordinator. So I've got Parks and Recreation represented here, so all of the great things that we do in our city, these two have a key part in that. And I'm also very proud to be a part of all the, as a member of all the previous Employees of the Month, because we've got an outstanding group here in Dana Point, and we've recognized some outstanding individuals, and I'm just proud to be a part of one of them.
Mr. Veal, would you come up and say a few words about Donate Life, please?
So thank you, Mayor, again, for the opportunity to serve Dana Point and be a part of your staff and our city manager. Thank you.[1136.75][1136.75](applause)
Thank you, fine, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight on Donate Life Month. This is a program, if you're aware or not aware, of organ transplantation, and how important it is to people like myself who have gone through the need to have an organ transplant. Eight years ago, I had amyloid, which is a bad protein that my liver produced, and because of that, it killed my heart and my eyes. My eyes got fixed, but I needed to fix my heart, and I had to get a new liver. So I got a heart and liver transplant. And I got it from a kid, 28-year-old kid, who died in a construction accident, fell off the roof, and I got his heart and liver. Forty-four people other than me got things like corneas, kidneys, lungs, tissue, ACLs, and things from Brian Pavel. And so I urge you all to look on your license, be sure that you have the pink dot, because the life you save could be your kids' or your friends' kids', or whatever. It's really important. Organ donation, we have 12 million people on the list in California waiting, you know, that are donors, that have the pink dots. There are 120-something thousand people every day on the transplant list waiting for a transplant to live. And every five minutes, somebody dies waiting on that list. So it's important that you have the pink dot. So I appreciate your time to recognize the Donate Life Month, and thank you, appreciate it.[1259.04][1259.04](applause)
Wow, what a heartfelt story. Thank you for sharing. We have a presentation for you, proclamation. Okay, proclamation, Donate Life Month, April 2016. Whereas organ tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. Whereas more than 123,000 individuals nationwide, and more than 21,000 in California, are currently on national organ transplant waiting list, and every 90 minutes, one person dies while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. Whereas more than 600,000 units of blood are needed to meet the need in California at any given time, 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. And whereas a single individual's donation of heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can save and heal lives of up to 50 others, and with a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood. And whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. And whereas nearly 12 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. And California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Donate Life Month in the city of Dana Point.[1367.25][1367.25](applause) Next item on this evening's agenda is Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Are there any items to reboot my staff? Not this evening, sir. By the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have items 10, 14, 17, and 20.
I do have one. I'd like to pull item 20. Do I hear a motion to move the balance of the calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please cast your vote. The motion to pass the balance of the calendar passes 5-0. Moving on to our first pulled item, item number 10. Mr. Schottkevitz, is there a staff report?
Yes, item number 10 is our monthly Treasurer's Report. It's pretty self-explanatory, but having said that, Mr. Kilbrun and/or I would be happy to respond to any questions the council may have as a result of its presentation.
Okay, we have one speaker this evening on item number 10, and that's Buck Hill. Please state your name and city resident.
Buck Hill, 18-year resident of Dana Point. I live in Capistrano Beach. Finance is one of my favorite topics, and I think we have a two-star financial reporting system here, not our five-star that we're expecting. And the reason I'm bringing this up is we just had a big discussion about how much has been spent on Town Center since we began planning in 2003 through the completion of the Del Prado piece of project this year. And through that testimony, we found with the help of Michael Kilbrun's testimony that there was something over 26 million spent on it. And just to show how little knowledge of that exists, Councilman, former Councilman Bro testified that he thought on the last two major projects, PCH and Del Prado, there was only 13 million spent. So I think there are a lot of people who don't know where are the city's funds going and how much is being spent on different projects. Now, we have these reports virtually every month on the Treasurer's Report, and what we hear about is we're still half-invested in one fund and half-invested in another fund, and we know the total in those two funds, but it doesn't change much, and it also doesn't tell you much. In addition to that, there's the next item on the agenda, which is called Demands. It's like a list of all the checkbook items. To me, we ought to have good, clear quarterly statements. How much has the cash flow been affected this quarter? How much budget has been spent by each different department versus our budgets? How are the capital projects proceeding? And I was concerned about this last meeting and asked Mr. Chodkevitz, "Where is the report for the second quarter, which ended December 30th? I haven't seen it published. Is it anywhere around here?" He said, "I don't know. I'll find out for you." He hasn't gotten back to me. I haven't seen it published, and this is the end of the fourth month after that. Now we've finished another quarter, and there should be a report. Now, in between there, there was a report offered sometime around the middle of March that talked about spending through January. So clearly, the finance department knows monthly how much is being spent. I would hope the council would also be informed of that and how it compares with budgets. But the public has not seen any of this stuff. This can't be a first-class reporting system. Same thing at year-end. Year-end last year, the forecast bid balance in total funds was $19 million. That forecast was made and approved by this council in June, about the middle of June. The end of the year was the end of June. In less than one month, we beat that forecast by something like $15 million. We had more money than we thought we would. Good happening, but ridiculous that the budgeting is that inaccurate and slipshod. And I was concerned about this last meeting and asked Mr. Chotkevitz, "Where is the report for the second quarter, which ended December 30th? I haven't seen it published, is it anywhere around here?" He said, "I don't know, I'll find out for you." He hasn't gotten back to me. I haven't seen it published, and this is the end of the fourth month after that. Now we've finished another quarter, and there should be a report. Now, in between there, there was a report offered sometime around the middle of March that talked about spending through January. So clearly, the finance department knows monthly how much is being spent. I would hope the council would also be informed of that and how it compares with budgets. But the public has not seen any of this stuff. This can't be a first-class reporting system. Same thing at year-end. Year-end last year, the forecast bid balance in total funds was $19 million. That forecast was made and approved by this council in June, about the middle of June. The end of the year was the end of June. In less than one month, we beat that forecast by something like $15 million. We had more money than we thought we would. Good happening, but ridiculous that the budgeting is that inaccurate and slipshod. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for your comment. Is there any comments by council?
Mr. Kilbrue, would you like to respond to Mr. Hill's comment about the 27 million? Because as I recall, part of that was actually investment by other outside agencies the city doesn't have control over. Could you respond to that a little bit?
Okay, let me kind of back up a little bit. I was asked to testify on the cost of the improvements in Town Center. Those improvements began roughly in 2009 with the design and some environmental work, and continue till, to this day, there's still a couple contracts with some pickup items under 100,000 total. The total of all those expenditures for the improvements themselves is right at $18.9 million. Prior to the improvement starting, there was a whole planning process that basically sets up the zoning for the Town Center. That's what, anything that can get built down there, private uses and so forth. So, you know, again, what I was asked to testify to was how much were the improvements? And they were $18.9 million. If you want to go back and change about the whole zoning plan, the Town Center plan itself and its development that started back way before I got here with all the community meetings, you know, literally hundreds of meetings and all the testimony before the Planning Commission prior to the City Council, I don't have those costs. That wasn't part of what I was asked to identify last week.
Wasn't the Water District a significant part of the 27 million?
Again, I don't know how they came up with their 27.
Ask Mr. Kilbrue, please.
When I was looking at the numbers that were put into the declaration that was made by Mr. Hill, as I told the judge, it's apples and oranges. As far as his accounting, he was grabbing numbers out of budgets and out of actual expenditures and out of capitalization of assets and put them all together. So I don't know, I couldn't unravel fully on how he came to his number, but one thing I did conclude was his calculation wasn't something that was going to end in a real number, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
You know, perhaps I can add a little more clarity for the sake of members of the audience that may not know what was going on last week as well. Mr. Hill was sued by a citizens' group. He was accused of making false and misleading statements in the arguments related to the ballot measures that are out there. The court agreed and found that he had made false and misleading statements. Relating particularly to the budget issue, the argument made statements to the effect of the city's reserves had been depleted by $20 million for the Town Center improvements. That statement in particular was deemed to be false and misleading. After a lot of discussion in court, it was agreed by Mr. Hill's attorneys and the city and the plaintiffs in the case that the proper number was this $18.5 million number that Mr. Kilbrue testified. So they allowed the ballot statement to be changed to reflect that approximately $20 million was spent. $26 million was not spent. You know, the number that was stated again tonight is just not accurate in terms of the true facts or what occurred in court the other day.
Thank you.
Could I comment on that?
No, no, sir. Any other council comments? I'll entertain a motion to move the item.
Second.
No, I did not, because you're a little early, Mr. Olivera. I'll entertain a motion to move the item.
So moved.
Please cast your vote. The item passed as 5 to 0. Next item to be pulled from the Consent Calendar is item number 14, Doheny Village Plan Update.
Thank you, Mayor Tomlinson. If I could, I'd like to ask Ursula and Cindy to provide a summary of the report before you.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and members of the City Council. For your request, we have provided a monthly update of the Doheny Village planning effort. And I'm happy to report that we have received the administrative draft of the code language from the consultant Opticos. Staff is currently reviewing that administrative draft. The code committee, a good portion of it has been selected with the council members and planning commissioners that were selected, that committee to select the at-large resident as well as the business owner. And those meetings will commence in May. In terms of the environmental impact report, that effort has commenced. There's further details in your staff report, and Cindy or I will be happy to answer any particular questions you might have about that. And further, we've continued to engage with the community, in particular with Capo Unified School District. And I would like to report that we've continued to have, engaging in meaningful dialogue with the school district and are working cooperatively together to move forward. Also, it is worth noting the recent investment in the Doheny Village area. There are a couple of pictures in your staff report of the median that, as you enter into the area, that we think really helps beautify the area. So we are continuing to look at some short-term wins and improvements that we can do. And I know that Brad Fowler could elaborate on some of those other items if you are interested. And with that, I'll conclude the staff report. And Cindy, Brad, and I are available to answer any questions.
Ursula, if I could, if you could, if you or Cindy could please comment on the communications that we've had from Caltrans relative to the road diet, please?
Sure. We had started down the path originally to include in the environmental impact report an analysis of the proposed road diet, which was indicated in the Opticos illustrative plan. And the road diet called for the elimination of the traveling in each direction and then roundabouts at key intersections, as well as some changes to the on-and-off ramp to the 5 freeway. Mr. Fowler and staff had a couple of meetings, discussions with Caltrans early in the process, and it became clear at that point that they were going to require an extensive series of studies to be undertaken. It wasn't that they were necessarily opposed to considering the road diet, because in other communities, they've actually supported roundabouts as a means to improve traffic flow. But they just wanted to make sure that all of the detailed analyses were in place before they would actually review our formal environmental document, if that were to be our course of direction. So we convened internally and felt that in the best interest of advancing the land use plan, we would be better served to peel off the road diet as a piece of our original environmental impact report and rather assume that Doheny Park Road would remain in its current configuration. And then we would run a parallel study for the road diet, do the additional technical studies that are being requested by Caltrans, and then at some point, the two will converge. But our primary reason for doing that is so that we could get the land use plan and zoning document approved by the City Council and get it before the Coastal Commission, because it's uncertain, as you well know, how long it will take to get Coastal Commission review and consideration. So we don't want to delay the land use plan, because it's really key to manage what types of uses actually may pop up in Doheny Village between now and then. So we did make the decision to run parallel courses. We've been in recent discussions with Caltrans, as current as this past week. They understand the two paths, the direction we're taking here, and they don't seem to have any issue with that. So that's where we're at, and we're working out an additional scope with Nelson Nygaard to address the additional studies that Caltrans will require.
Thank you very much. And I guess my point is this, is we have a number of external factors entering into the picture now. Caltrans, the discussions with CUSD and what have you, as well as bringing the public back in at some time. And in order, and council-directed staff to move forward post-haste to do this, and I always like to say we won't serve any wine before it's time, but at some point, we're going to have to make key assumptions to move this project forward. Otherwise, we can be studying it for every which way from here till Sunday and not yet submitted to the Coastal Commission for 24 months. Again, keeping in mind the community's expectation, but also the direction of the council, we're trying to move forward very quickly. So with that, we would be happy to respond to any questions.
If I just may add that we can very easily, from an environmental perspective, it'll either be an addendum to the EIR or a supplemental EIR, depending on whether any impacts are identified as part of the road diet. It will be able to be handled that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Is there any other questions by staff or by council to staff? Seeing none, we have one speaker this evening on item number 14, Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach.
Good evening. My name is Tony Nelson, resident of Capistrano Beach. I wanted to comment on several things about the Doheny Village update. But first, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Kevin Evans and congratulate him on his retirement and his crew for not only returning Pine's Park to its former glory, but working diligently on some of the landscaping projects that we've been requesting for the past year or so in Doheny Village and in Capistrano Beach in general. But in the last couple of weeks, we've seen a couple of wonderful things. We've seen a beautiful new median on Doheny Park Road. It looks great, thank you so much. And a really wonderful little landscaped area near the nursery school at Victoria and Camino Capistrano. And the highlight of that little spot is this amazing sculpture that appeared a couple of days ago. And I just found out that Doug actually found it at a, I don't know, at a conference or something, but it is amazing. It is absolutely beautiful. It's two children with a jump rope between them, and it's, we've had such wonderful comments on our Facebook page and from members about it. It's absolutely beautiful, and we really love it. I'd also like to report that Capital Care has reached out to the City of San Juan Capistrano and talked to them about the other median that's up near the 5 freeway. And they very promptly decided to mulch it for us. It's not a complete redo, but the mulch really helped, it looks a lot better. And they're also in the process of renewing the landscaping at the entrance to Costco, which is also part of San Juan. So we appreciate both cities working with us. It's going to be a little while before we have the Doheny Village revitalized, but we want it to look as good as it can in the meantime. All of these things help to make the most of what we have in Doheny Village, and I hope we'll continue to make improvements. I'm also happy to report that we'll be working with Jill Jackson of Police Services to set up a neighborhood watch program in the village. And we already have several block captains on board. We're going to have a separate business neighborhood watch and a resident neighborhood watch, and I think it's really important to reduce the crime in that area. Right now, Doheny Village represents 38% of the crime in Capo Beach. So it's really taking a disproportionate hit of crime, and mainly along Doheny Park Road. So we want the residents to help us to clean up the area as much as they can. This area is the first that people see as they come in from Dana Point, and we're happy that council realizes the vital importance of making a good first impression. So thank you for recognizing that and helping us. Also, on the Doheny Village plan, we're happy that it's moving along expeditiously, and we want to thank Cindy Nelson for making that happen. But we also want to state that we don't want to see any delays. We want to see council working with the Capistrano Unified School District to make an agreement and not drag this thing out. We want to see the road diet moving ahead. Cindy assured me that we'll shortly get a, we'll shortly have a timeline so we'll know when exactly that's going to happen. But we'd like to see it all coalesce at the same time so that we can move ahead. And then the third thing we're waiting for, of course, is funding. And the mayor assured me that he's working with Mr. Kilbrue, and they're going to try to find some funding so that we can set aside some money for the infrastructure. So my basic message is, please don't hold it up. We want to see this happen, and we want to see it happen soon. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, where are your comments? Any discussion by staff or council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Nelson, for your comments. You know, this is a project that holds a lot of importance for, I think, everybody on this council and this community in general. And we've had a lot of criticism over what we did in Lannan District. And we're being asked to do the exact same thing in Doheny Village. And so I've been looking at this, and it continues to be a priority of mine. I campaigned on it, it was important to get this project done. I think that it's important to the city to get it completed. And so, you know, I was looking at, I was investigating funding sources for this, quite frankly. I think it's time that we do need to set aside and create this fund and start setting aside funds for Doheny Village. I mean, it's important, it needs to start now. I've got one quick question before I finish for Mr. Fowler, real quickly, though, because we need to put this in perspective. What is this going to cost? I know we're not there yet, the design isn't finished. But just in general, from what you've seen from the original charrettes, could you give us a ballpark on what you think the infrastructure cost will be for Doheny Village?
So, okay, you've got me a little off-guard here.
Sorry.
But let me run through a few things to give you some idea, I guess, and what we've looked at. There's a lot of pieces to that puzzle, a lot of parts. I've looked at the most recent submittal that we've received from our consultant on things. And this is prior to the road diet and the roundabouts and so forth. But they're proposing significant improvements to Doheny Park Road, as you would expect. If you look at the costs that we did on Del Prado and so forth, it's not a dissimilar project to that. So you're probably talking $7 to $10 million in there. And I say this is a wide range, because if the road diet and the roundabouts come, those will be more expensive, probably, because there may be some land acquisition and so forth that goes along with that. The plan includes improvements to Victoria Road, and so you're $1 million, $2 million probably in there on streets. You've got the realignment of Camino Capistrano. We did take a look at that when that was initially proposed in some detail quite a while ago, in fact, back in the Boris Stremov days. And that's about $4 to $5 million for that. The proposal has improvements on Domingo and Sepulveda and on some of the, you know, lesser-traveled streets in there. So you've got a few million dollars in there. If you, you've got to find some way to make the improvements for the pedestrian and bikeways to connect, whether you, you know, cross the bridge there at Victoria. That was a very expensive project. And we're looking at a couple options, maybe trying to make the on-ramp there. If Caltrans would let us use that to get across from Doheny Park Road to Doheny State Park, you can do that, or the other connectivity study improvements. And that's, depending on what Caltrans allows us to do, you know, $3, $4 million and so forth. So, you know, round numbers, you know, if you add all those things together for public improvements, you know, you're in the, say, $25 million, I don't know. There's quite a few, it could be 20, 30 million. It's very hard to say right now, it depends on what you all approve.
Okay, thank you. I just want everybody to hear what that number is. And this is before the design's complete. If we end up with roundabouts on Doheny Village Road, this is not an unsubstantial number for us. And so I was looking for funding sources. I worked with Mr. Kilbrue on this. And it became very obvious that we need to expand our revenue sources in this city. And I think that's what we tried to do with Town Center, by bringing in additional shops, restaurants, condos. We increase our sales tax revenue, we increase our property tax revenue. And I think that's what's going to be needed here. So I would like to direct staff to take a look at setting up the Doheny Village Fund and using the development impact fees from Town Center, if we can. I don't know if that's possible or not. And also taking a look at the increased sales and property taxes that we can, that we're going to experience in that area.
I don't think we would need to set up a new fund in governmental accounting. That takes on a whole new meaning, but to set up a separate account.
Can we do that? That's what I mean.
A quote reserve account, to actually set money aside for it, that would be the appropriate.
We could do that, or we could just put a line item in the CIP budget, and the council can start funding that directly, however you choose to do it, from your general fund revenues.
Okay, but I specifically want to take a look at the Town Center revenues, because when we looked at the budget, there weren't a lot of other revenue sources that weren't already committed.
And one of the things I talked about with past councils when we were doing the Town Center planning was that, you know, we have all our eggs in one basket, and that's TOT and the associated sales tax. We're a five-star resort destination town. As any finance person will tell you, like myself, you always want to diversify your revenue portfolio. So we're not so dependent upon the transient occupancy tax. You know, the chances of us getting a big box or an auto dealership is slim to none.
Right.
Build-out community. So I think one of the things we need to focus on are those opportunities to capture additional sales tax. One of the big issues is... One of the big issues is we continue to want to work collaboratively with the county over the harbor, because that's a big source of revenue from a sales tax standpoint, but also, you know, Doheny Village, Town Center, wherever we can, is to identify opportunities to get quality sales tax.
And I appreciate that, but it's starting to look like the harbor project is minimum another five years out before they're going to start building that, just a guess. And by the time they're done, we're probably looking at seven to 10 years. And I don't think anybody in this community is really willing to wait seven to 10 years to start funding this project. And I think we need to start saving that money now. I think the most immediate funding source for that, and again, it's not ready yet because it needs to develop as well, is the Town Center revenue stream that we're anticipating once it's built out. But we can take advantage of the development impact fees. And I don't know. I mean, that's the one that I'm concerned if that has to stay there or if we can do some kind of a swap to, from general fund.
Absolutely.
Let me weigh in on that, if you'd like. I mean, legally, development impact fees have to be used for the purposes that they're collected. But if the council wanted to, you could look at the fees that come in and take an equal amount out of the general fund and set it aside towards, you know, this, I can't remember the right terminology used, reserve for Town Center.
The Town Center development impact fees are repaying the city for expenditures that have already been incurred, so I don't see a problem with the council designating them for another project.
Okay, so we're anticipating around $4.7 million from those fees, correct?
And in keeping with that, with Doheny Village, there would be a development impact fee associated with that, and the expectation is that by creating these additional funds, that we can advance the monies with the hope of getting them back on the back end, but those are delayed based upon development. The other thing that's important to point out here is the recession really hit the community hard, because in spite of the recession, we still operated, you know, in the black, but not as much as we had. And when you go back and look at the impact of the four or five years, however long it was, on the recession to our transient occupancy tax, it was north of conservatively $15 million, would you say, Mr. Kilabrew, approaching 18 to 20?
Yeah, 15 to 16.
Yeah. So having said that, that $15 to $16 million is something we didn't have control over, but at the same time, you know, we were able to adapt and weather the storm and still have adequate money on hands to advance the Town Center plan. So it'd be my hope that we, you know, with council direction, that we would do that. We'd probably recommend it anyway through the budget process, because it's a prudent thing to do. But I think with council direction, when we come back at the year-end, the council can have those discussions as to how much you would like to fund that effort.
Any other council comments? Okay, is there a motion to move?
Move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Please cast your vote. The item passes five to zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Could we get a little direction where Councilmember Miller's suggestions intended to be included in the motion? We heard his comments, does the rest of council want us to do that?
I guess I'd have to make a motion to amend, okay, I'd make a motion that we direct staff to create a reserve fund or an account for Doheny Village and explore the funding sources for how we would fund that account.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Passes five to zero, thank you. Next item is item number 20. I've polled that, 17, I missed one? Okay.
That's correct, number 17.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Jill. Item 17, endorsement of California Cultural Heritage Art Display in Dana Point. Is there any staff report? Mr. Schalkavis?
Yes, Mayor Tomlinson. This item is a report back with an endorsement from the Art and Culture Commission to proceed with the California Cultural Heritage Art Display, which is a long way of saying painted cows. This is a follow-on to our successful Elephant Parade. As council recall, Mr. Yarger approached the council and the direction we put it fast-tracked it on the Art and Culture Commission. We're back with a letter of endorsement, and I see that there was also a request for a $10,000 sponsorship. And so with that, we would be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Any questions from council members?
I have a quick one. Arts and Culture has their own budget, is that correct? No?
No. No, they're an advisory board to the city council.
So this will have to come out of the general fund?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we have one public speaker this evening, Dana Yarger. Please state your name and city of residence, please.
Hi, Dana Yarger, Dana Point. I live on Del Prado, and I want to thank Kevin for the great work he's done. I was the one who burst out that no, this can't be true, when he announced at the last session that he's leaving. That was horrible. Horrible news for us, because, as you know, he was so instrumental in helping the successful Elephant Project get done. We're going to miss him a lot. I want to bring to your attention, just support something that our city manager has done by adding public art. It sounds like down in Doheny Village is already a good response to that. So I support and have always pledged my effort to try to get more public art in Dana Point. It creates goodwill. It creates revenue as well, as well as sales tax. Even to this day, our little shop in Del Prado continues to sell elephant-related things. So I have provided a little bit of an update. There is, as we're working with the Camp Ronald McDonald for Good Times, it's a little bit of a moving target, because they have other proposals that come in, and the ultimate goal is to raise money for their project. So I've provided here some examples of some of the finished sculptures already, plus a little bit of a budget that I look forward to speaking with whoever, whomsoever would like to look at it and see what the tasks are ahead. And I'm really just here to thank you and to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Yarger.
Just to clarify what's included in the staff report, that the Art and Culture Commission endorsed this and recommended this to the city council. Included in the staff report is the fact that Mr. Yarger will be required to submit an application for a special event permit in accordance with the city's municipal code, and we require that of everybody. But again, while the Art and Culture Commission cannot approve funds, there was a request of $10,000 sponsorship. So with that, Mr. Kilabrew and I would be happy to respond to any questions, along with Mr. Evans.
Any questions by council? Mr. Schoffel?
Mr. Schalkavis, does $10,000 strike you as reasonable for the tasks that are set forth here? Is this going to give us a five-star cow exhibition?
Well, if it didn't, it wouldn't be here before you tonight. But having said that, in light of the information that Mr. Yarger provided to me, what I would like to do is this. If the council approves the concept, the $10,000 is well within my authority, and what I'll do is work with Mr. Kilabrew with this revised update and then make an appropriate funding sponsorship in concept if the council is going to move forward with this and accepts the concept that's been provided to you.
So I take it that was a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But again, I haven't had a chance to review Mr. Yarger's update.
I just have a question, Mr. Yarger's update. Are these actual concepts? Are these ones that are in production for slated? These are finished? And what type of artists do these? Are these artists from around the country or who?
All from California.
All from California, okay.
In some cases, a group of artists working together, led by a very important feature artist, and others are individual professional artists from California.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Olber?
I just kind of, I guess, give my opinion based on what I've seen on this handout that Mr. Yarger's gave us, that I would utterly approve having this display.
Mr. Olber, I've had to endure Mr. Yarger's emails for the past three weeks, and I'm utterly tired of hearing about it. But having said that.
Any further council comments?
Move the recommended item, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that motion. Please cast your vote. The item passes five to zero, thank you. Moving on to item 20. Madam Clerk, can you register an abstention from voting on this matter, because I have potential financial conflict in this matter? Thank you. I'll hand over the gavel to Mr. Vixoric to run this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 20. Do we have a staff report, Mr. Schalkavis?
Yes, I'd be happy to turn it over to Mr. Fowler to provide you with a brief staff report. Mr. Fowler?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We're asking for approval of a cooperative agreement with County of Orange here that's in the staff report for construction of the Coast Highway pedestrian crossing Phase One project. The scope of that project would be for the county to demolish their bridge span over Coast Highway. This is the pedestrian bridge down near Alamendes. And replace it with a crosswalk, a fully signalized crosswalk intersection with the Surfside Inn at that location. And at the completion of it, turn it over to the city, in simplest terms. We've been working on this project for many years. The county finally has the funding for it at this point, and they have been submitting plans, both for planning and for the city engineer to review and make sure that it meets our requirements, since we would be maintaining the traffic signal upon completion of the project. Their plan would be to take this to the Planning Commission as a next step. The crosswalk is within the authority of the city council from a coastal development permit standpoint, but the bridge demolition will be looked at by the Coastal Commission since it was originally put up by the Surfside Inn as a developer-required project from the Coastal Commission, pre-city incorporation. So there is a provision in the agreement that, in accordance with State Code 1700 through 1704, that actually gives the county the property while they do the improvements, when they're doing improvements for an organization outside their own that's required by State Code, so that provision is also in the agreement. May I answer any questions for you?
Brad, I just would like to add to that. One of the first things that I had the opportunity to deal with was how long it needed to be righted. I was over at the Doubletree itself, and I saw people walking across handing children over a handrail to get from the Doubletree to Doheny State Beach. And so at the city's expense, we worked with Caltrans to have that signalized crosswalk in there on public safety. I just want to throw out to the council, and we're under the radar, some discussion by the county to substitute out the crosswalk for sidewalk improvements. Those discussions are very preliminary, but I would have to tell you that, one, because of the access requirement behind that bridge, but more importantly, the public safety aspect, is the public needs to have a safe way to get across the road. And absent that crosswalk, I have some serious concerns about public safety. So I just want to put it out there, and the Coastal Commission, because that bridge was a condition of providing coastal access. So while there's some discussion, my hope is that the county will be held, but at the same time, in case you get any phone calls, I would strongly oppose the removal of safety to get across the highway on that stretch of road. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Brad, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, thank you. Just that this will provide ADA access across the street there, too, that's not there today. So it is an improvement that Capitol Beach has been asking for.
Mr. Mayor Protem, it came to our attention earlier today that the mayor had a conflict due to property being within 500 feet of this. So as part of any motion to approve this item, if I could ask that you also include that the agreement that's attached be revised to set up for the mayor Protem's signature instead of the mayor's signature?
Understood, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
Actually, there was no public comments. I think it was just your polling of the item. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no public comments, are there any questions or comment by council? Councilman Miller?
It's my understanding that this bridge was going to be replaced, not removed. And I'm a little concerned about creating a signalized crosswalk, especially when in Dana Point, near the Denny's, where we have our Dana Point Bridge. That was because they were requiring us to remove a crosswalk for traffic concerns. Has there been a study done on what this is going to do to traffic on PCH? I mean, the speed limit out there is 50 miles an hour, and we're going to create a crosswalk. That sounds very dangerous to me. And why are we moving from a bridge that needed to be updated, for sure, to a crosswalk where I still have to go over and go up a bridge to get across the railroad tracks? And what's the reasoning behind this?
In response to your first question, I think the speed limit there is higher now, but the community has been asking that we do some traffic calming along that stretch of roadway. The roadway there with a fully signalized intersection, we've always felt is safe, and the county has felt was safe, and from a traffic engineering standpoint, it would be a safe crossing there. We didn't want any of the Mickey Mouse signals like you see with just the flashing lights and things, because we do see a problem with that. Any transportation across, obviously, would need elevators to get across. The second phase that was discussed and the county is working on, which would provide a crossing of the railroad stretch, would have elevators in it as part of that project. So you do, you are crossing, and at least in the interim, you have an opportunity to hit the sidewalk, and then you can go down to Beach Road and cross, if need be. If you are not disabled, you can use the existing bridge that would remain there across the railroad tracks. The advantage that you get there from the county standpoint is that it's an affordable option for them, in great part. The difference between a crosswalk there as opposed to a bridge is significantly different in cost. So they have proposed this over many years, and as we have brought this project for review at times in the past, that has, the questions that you brought tonight have not been raised. So at this point, it's the proposal before you.
And I think, Brad, also, when you look at the history of the two, is the fact that the traffic crossing, a signalized traffic crossing here, provides a certain element of traffic calming, if you will, because of the signalization, but also a safe, more friendly ADA access, whereas where the Dana Point Bridge is, that was specifically designed to get people out of the intersection to enable through traffic to get through in a much more managed fashion. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that was a traffic congestion relief project. We saved ourselves nearly an hour a day by putting pedestrians over the street instead of across the street, because at that intersection, every time you press the button to go across as a pedestrian, that stopped traffic for an extra 15 seconds every time you did that. In the summer, that adds up. You do 15 seconds over the course of, you know, 60, 75 times a day, and all of a sudden, you saved an hour. So that was really a congestion relief effort as well.
And much credit goes to Mr. Fowler for the way that was designed, because I believe we added some street width, some additional lanes, but I remember way back in the we added some street width, some additional lanes, but I remember way back in the day when we would actually have traffic back up onto the freeway, getting off there at Beach Cities. Now, I quite candidly haven't seen that happen, and there are days if I, and because we have the signals synchronized, I've oftentimes gotten off that freeway, and I haven't hit a red light until Amber, Ruby, or even sometimes Blue Lantern. So I think in that case, it was part of a congestion relief program. So just by way of background, we wanted the council to have that information.
So we are, so that bridge is currently owned by the county? Is that correct?
Yes. And we originally had, you know, letters back and forth between the city and the county with this project previously, and kind of in agreement with the concept that we have today.
And so we are, in essence, taking a county responsibility and liability, letting them put in a crosswalk, turn it back over to the city, and now we're going to have the liability of that crosswalk if something happens down there?
That was the agreement that the county has presented and was brought before previous council, before we started into the design process. Well long ago, I also questioned the Coastal Commission to see whether this project would be approvable by them, and they agreed to it before the effort. There has been a significant amount of design effort and, you know, and back and forth between previous councils on the project already on it. But the answer to your question is yes. The county seemed unwilling in the past to do the project unless the city took over the improvement.
So where did the bridge go other than financially, they didn't want to build the bridge? That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Oh.
I mean, I think that's, they're going to put elevators in on the other side anyway. That's a major cost of this bridge. So, I mean, you'd only, you have to put that one in on the beach side, you put one in on the other side, and now we have, what's the delta in the cost of the bridge versus the crosswalk? And it stays a county issue other than a city issue?
Yeah. Well, as I said, the county made it clear before that they would not do any improvements unless the city took over the improvement.
Even if it's a bridge? We would take the bridge?
And the city has not agreed to take over the bridge at this point.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Schoffel?
Yeah, I've sat through all of those discussions, going way back when, the original community discussion, the response from the county, the deliberations. I believe at one point, we also ran it past JPIA to get their, and Perimeter, JPIA is the risk pool that we insure the city through. They didn't have a problem with it. It doesn't take too much visual acuity to see that that bridge is, like London Bridge, is falling down. It is crumbling. Gravity, age, saltwater, whatever, has taken its toll. I think, I continue to believe that it poses a safety hazard. I don't believe it's ADA compliant, certainly is an ADA compliant from going back to when it was built. It may not be the perfect solution, but I think it's a meaningful solution and a practical solution, and most importantly, one that can get done in real time. And I think that in the interest of public safety, in the interest of the cooperation between the county and the city, and the improvement of that neighborhood, that community over there, that it would be incumbent upon us to seriously consider approving this agreement this evening. I'd be prepared to make the motion that Mr. Munoz articulated earlier with the amendment that the mayor protam signed it to, so that Mr. Tomlinson doesn't have to participate in the decision because of a potential financial interest conflict. That'd be my motion. Mr. Mayor Protam?
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'd like to add a few comments. Now, I actually, I think the points brought up by Councilman Miller are very good ones. And from what I've heard, some of the answers, I guess I'm not fully understanding the answer that the county is saying, hey, we're just not going to do it. We're going to leave that bridge alone in its current state unless you, Dana Point, bail us out of this, even if it's not ADA compliant? Maybe this is a question for council. I mean, how does the county take that position that they're not going to comply with ADA and force us to, in essence, bail them out?
The ADA issue basically boils down to the bridge having been built before nineteen ninety-two, which was kind of a critical date with ADA. Anything built after nineteen ninety-two, as practical matter, has to be ADA compliant unless you meet one of very, very, very few exceptions. Prior to nineteen ninety-two, you could do more without having to comply, and that's when the bridge was built. And for whatever it's worth, in terms of the crossing being dedicated to the city, as long as we build it in a manner that's consistent with approved engineering designs and maintain it in that manner, at least if the courts follow the law, we have design immunity and cannot be sued, or at least can't be successfully sued. So that should provide some comfort, I think. And as Councilmember Schoffel mentioned, you know, we have run this by CJPIA, and they didn't, you know, throw up red flags and hold your breath and turn blue and say, "Don't do it." So from that perspective, at least, I don't know if that's any comfort, but it's something...
Well, I'll stay. I guess it's comforting from a legal aspect, from the actual safety aspect. It seems to me that the bridge is a much safer option than having people crossing a street where the traffic's moving that fast. Now, I know we have a, we're putting in lights that are supposed to slow the traffic down, and perhaps that will address the safety issue, but the, I guess, I guess what I'm really struggling with here is, you know, why, why won't the county put in the bridge? Well, it costs too much, apparently, and they want us to take it over. The speed limit there is forty-five or fifty miles an hour. What's the effect on the traffic as well? Now, you alluded to it, Mr. Fowler, that it's going to slow down the traffic. Have we had any studies on what the effect is going to be in that area? And it's sort of a curse to me, we, maybe I misunderstand its mission, but we have a, don't we have a traffic improvement subcommittee? Wouldn't this fall under their jurisdiction to analyze?
Candidly, I think it's before you right now is because this is the culmination of past council action and direction. So again, you know, I'm not even sure when we started this discussion, there was a traffic improvement subcommittee, but having said that regardless, this is finally the county bringing it back with documents to enable, or to pass council action. So again, Brad, anything?
Just to, the traffic volumes on that street are very low in terms of having a four-lane thoroughfare. So in terms of, the purpose of a study would simply be to determine whether the throughput there would change in terms of speed, and the answer is that yes, you may reduce the speed there if you happen to get caught at the light. However, the primary source of crossing there will be pedestrian. It's not a light that's going every ninety seconds every time at that point. It's pedestrian activated. So the frequency of the signal operating and slowing the traffic is much less there than you would see at another intersection in terms of looking at what the impacts to the signal is on your vehicle traffic through there. And typically, we look at signals to determine whether it causes congestion or it causes a vehicle capacity problem, and it won't at an intersection at that location.
Brad, don't we, as we develop stop sign location, other traffic improvements, there's state guidelines and warrants that have to be made, and is there anything that based upon what was approved by past council indicate it's not supported by warrants or state highway standards?
No, there's nothing that does not support establishment of a signal at that location.
Well, I guess I, I'm still not convinced. I mean, I feel like whatever the actions of the past councils were, I certainly, I would like to support them if they were solid, based in solid reasoning, but it just seems to me like this, this does not, what are we getting out of this agreement? And I guess a follow-up question, maybe I don't want to know the answer to this, but what if we don't approve this? The bridge is, it's there to stay?
Well, you're putting your fate in the county's hands. I mean, at that point, and I don't mean to be glib, but the problem that we've had is we've asked for years to have it maintained, have the appearance changed, have the rust taken off, have the spalling concrete from stop falling off of that bridge, and the answer has been nothing. And it's been done. And we finally see action here in this. I can see from a rearview mirror, you may wonder about it, but I will tell you that we've spent a lot of time working previously with it, and we wouldn't have gone this far to the point that we're bringing the agreement to you had we not been through these wickets previously, but it's obvious that our last correspondence with the county, and it's taken them a long time to finish the design on this bridge and come up with a funding, did span from the past council to this council, so with the new council members. I apologize that we're probably coming to you with something that you haven't had all the history on with all the time that we have spent on it.
Are there any further comments in light of mine? In that case, I'll call for the vote.
Madam Clerk, I just want to make sure that, should I have hit abstention on my vote? Okay, we might have.
The motion passes three to one with one abstention. And with that, I'll turn the gavel back over to our mayor.
We are now at the public comments portion of our agenda. Any person wishing to address the City Council during public comments section or an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak from, which are available on the table at the side of the council chamber. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called by the mayor and prior to the individual being heard by the city council. In order to conduct a timely hearing, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of fifteen minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of the public comments will be heard after the new business portion of the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments, which also means there shouldn't be any clapping or any cheering. So state law prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. If anyone has handouts to distribute to the city council, please follow proper procedure and hand them to the city clerk. The city clerk will see that they are distributed. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles of the ordinances listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two introduction and first readings this evening. First one is item number nineteen. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, amending Chapter two point two zero entitled Emergency Organization of the Dana Point Municipal Code. Second one is on item number twenty-four. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, amending Section thirteen point zero four point zero three zero of the Dana Point Municipal Code relating to hours of use in public parks and facilities, including strand access areas in the Dana Point headlands, and repealing City of Dana Point Ordinance Number ten dash zero five. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Shotkavis, is there a staff report regarding item nineteen? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment, Madam Clerk. What I have here tonight is the first speakers are Michael Villar from Palisades Destination Imagination, and I also have information that there's supposed to be another group from Dana Hills High here. Are they here this evening? And, no? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schoffel.
Good evening. My name is Michael Villar. This is my daughter Anna, and these are other students from Palisades Elementary School. They're part of a Destination Imagination team that won its way to a global finals in Knoxville, Tennessee at the end of May, and I just wanted to thank all of you for your generous donation to help them to travel on their way there. Your donation is really going to help them to compete against other teams from all over the world, and they actually would like to say a couple of words to you in gratitude.
This is our DI team, Destination Imagination team.
I'm Anna, and I'm the author of the group.
I'm Nora, and I'm the artist of the group.
I'm Alexandra, and I'm the narrator.
I'm Arjun, and I'm the mechanic of the group.
I'm Trevor, and I'm the engineer of the group.
And I'm Zachary, the cute second grader. Anna's the main part of the story.
Destination Imagination is an academic competition where teams of students compete in challenges that have you use your imagination and problem-solving skills.
Our challenge was the technical challenge, which involves promotion methods, movement methods of going back and forth of a fourteen-feet area.
We were lucky enough to pass the regionals, state, and now globals, which is in Knoxville, Tennessee, and that's what we need the money for.
It is fifteen hundred dollars for each person to go to Tennessee and nine thousand dollars in total.
Any questions?
Mayor Tomlinson, if I could just, by way of background for the council, I'd received a request earlier this week, yesterday, from the Destination Imagination group from Palisades as well as Dana Hills High School, and in keeping with the council's commitment to the arts, especially with the youth, and the fact that we hadn't received any requests from SOSHA in the last several years, as I can recall, I asked Mr. Kilabru to draw a draft in the amount of two thousand dollars from the city to sponsor these two Dana Point based schools to help them on their way. So that was done in record time. We didn't have a chance to get it on tonight's agenda because it was received after the posting of the agenda. So by way of background, good luck, kids, and that was the background.
Well, I want to compliment you. Your team there, ladies and gentlemen, you did an outstanding job, and we're very proud of you, and you handled yourselves very well at the podium this night, so we appreciate that. And how many hours did you guys spend on this project?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Since October, they started in October.
Yeah, possibly more.
Possibly more. Now, did you guys divide that time up equally, or did you, was there specific teams?
Well, we split the team up in half. There was the creative side and the building side, so one team would build vehicles and mechanical stuff, and the other team would come up with stories and draw stuff.
Well, quite impressive. We congratulate you again on behalf of the city council and myself, and thank you for your valuable time to this community and what you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce it? Is that Terry Rufflin? How do you pronounce it? Okay, next speaker is Terry Rifkin. Did I pronounce that right? Ms. Rifkin, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson, and council, and city friends. It's always nice to be here, and also wanted to thank you for the wonderful support from the city. When I look around, by the way, the Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group and a resident of Dana Point, I should add. When I look around at the support, the other support organizations for the battalions receive, it's paled by the support that we receive from Dana Point. So, I like to stop by every now and again. Thank you, and also just share with you what's going on at the Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group, and also what's going on with the Fifth Marine Regiment. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about our Combat Golf Tournament coming up. You all have a flyer in your hands, and if you have never played golf with a flak jacket and a helmet, this might be the tournament for you. It actually, you might see an improvement in your game, so we invite you to join us. Specifically, I would like to thank someone who's always behind the scenes, someone who's been a good friend of our Combat Golf Tournament, and that's Patrick Munoz. I know you're surprised, but you've been at our tournament almost every year, and I wanted to present to you a plaque of appreciation and recognition because you're kind of one of our unsung heroes for being there each year, supporting our brave defenders, and I'd like you to read this plaque to you and hope that you'll accept it. We're honored to have you with us each year. With great appreciation for your enduring support of our Marines and sailors of the Fifth Marine Regiment, your dedication and loyalty to our brave defenders demonstrates your passion and commitment to those who have sacrificed so much to preserve the freedom that Americans enjoy. Semper Fidelis, the Dana Point Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group. It's always nice to catch someone in the act of doing something good. So, thank you, Patrick. We really appreciate all that you've done for us over the years.
Terry, I was going to ask if you could check the weapon with the deputy at the door, please.
I had it in a brown bag. I had it in a brown bag. I know that the attorney will make sure that it's in good hands. I have just a few seconds left just to share with you all that in the last few weeks, our Fifth Marine Regiment joined up with the Special Marine Air Ground Task Force, and they are now in the Middle East in the fight against ISIS. They'll be gone for about 10 months. So, we have an adopt a Marine program where single Marines and Marines with families can be adopted by civilians. We've already adopted about 75 Marines that are, you know, and what that is, is just cards, encouragement, goodie boxes, letters, prayers, just send across the miles. So, we still have some Marines waiting to be adopted, and I just wanted to share a little bit with you. We'll be, of course, taking care of our regiment with goodie boxes and baby showers, Marine Corps ball and other kinds of things while they're gone. So, again, thank you for your support. Patrick, thank you always for yours. And Kevin, you've been a great friend to us, and we wish you well. It's bittersweet. We know it's a great adventure for you. Thank you so much, and thank all of you.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Dana Point Fifth Marines Regiment Support Group. Mr. Munoz, I might like to borrow that as a leather opener, if it's possible. That's a nice K-bar. Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Michael Hurley. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Hurley. I run a multinational business, actually, out of my house, right on Santa Clara Street. And, you know, I promised myself when I moved to Dana Point that I would try to stay just in my little office at home and mind my own business, but against my better judgment, I decided to come here and just express my support for Measure I and the Town Center Initiative. I've been watching over the last two years of some of the developments and the projects that have been going on, and I'm very excited about the possibilities of what the Town Center could turn into, and really, I just came here to say thank you for the hard work that I know you guys are doing because I'm looking at investing resources into the community as well with new tech projects and things that I do, and there's a lot of things to be excited about over the next couple of years, and I think Dana Point, I've said for now, two to three years, this is, we've got a lot of work to do, but this is going to be one of the greatest little beach towns that Orange County has. So, I'm excited for the possibilities, and I just wanted to say thanks. I mean, gosh, I've been able to have so many conversations with people about some of the different Town Center initiatives over the last probably two to three weeks, just to get myself informed, and I'm very grateful to be a part of the community for the time being, and hopefully, if we can keep this thing rolling, then it'll be great to set up shop here and get some new operations happening and some fun little tech projects that I think will really benefit the community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker will be Vanessa Christiansen, followed by Rick Erkanoff, and then Cindy Fleming.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and in particular, Mr. Carlos Alvera. I've been sitting in the audience this evening. Can you hear me?
Back up from the microphone just a little bit. We're getting a little feedback. Thank you.
This is really important, so I'm moving close because I want y'all to hear this. I sit in the audience tonight, and I'm wondering how many people truly understand what an important day it is in Orange County this coming Thursday. This coming Thursday is when a representative from each of the 35 cities in Orange County will be representing their city, and for this city, it would be Mr. Alvera. Sir, Mr. Alvera, I am addressing you personally this evening. You have a chance to be a hero to many, many thousands of people across the country this Thursday if you indeed will vote no. No aerial spraying of adulticides and toxins 300 feet above our heads, and no to giving all of the decision-making power to one man at vector control. I don't know if you guys know this, but we've got over a million-dollar budget in Orange County to spray poisons over our citizens and over our children, and less than $40,000 for education. We have less than a .003 percent chance of contracting West Nile virus, and even less for death. There's so much misconception as it surrounds this issue of mosquitoes right now. It's a travesty, what's happening, that so many people that are about to vote really don't have proper knowledge and education. So, sir, I'm begging you, and for our children, please listen to the experts that will be at the meeting on Thursday at 3:00. I encourage all citizens and all council members to be at this very important meeting. In my opinion, this is one of the most important meetings that we'll ever have in the state of California in the near future and past. There are people looking at us from all over the entire nation right now to see what is going to happen in Orange County, and if we, the people, voicing our opinions that we don't want more toxins on a generation of children that are the sickest of the generations, we're trying to remove toxins, sir. So, I'm begging you to truly listen to the experts. Indeed, it's truth that aerial spraying for mosquitoes is one of the least effective methods. That is posted at the CDC level. You can read it yourself. Leading experts in the field have been contacted. There's a very active community in the area called Nontoxic Irvine. I encourage this city, as I am my own, I live in Mission Viejo, and I've been a resident of Orange County for 53 years, I'm encouraging this council to set up a group of you to actually look at removing toxins, not adding. With that said, I will just say that, again, it is less than a .003 percent chance, and this particular spraying will not do anything for the daytime biters and Zika. There's a huge educational problem, sir, so all I'm doing is saying, please, let's put more time and effort into educating the public about the truth of this. Look into these one- and $2 traps that are 80 percent reductions in states or in countries like Singapore, Puerto Rico, and Australia, and I encourage you to look at the letter that was sent just this morning to all of the council members from Nontoxic Irvine. There's some phenomenal information in there about ways that we could have a non-toxic solution to eradicate this issue in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Rick Erkanoff, please.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson, honorable counsel. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I know, y'all know, I wear a lot of hats in the community today. I come as a 44-year resident of Dana Point. It's hard to believe it's been that many years because I don't feel much older than about 24, 25. First off, I'd like to congratulate Kevin on his retirement. That's a pretty exciting time in a person's life, and I'll probably never get to that point in my life. But I'd like to congratulate the city and thank the city on a great weekend. I don't know when the unofficial start of summer is, but it sure as heck felt like last weekend. There were two major events. The California Wine Festival, which went off without a hitch, no incidences, excellent VIP event at the Dana Cliffs Marriott. It was very well-attended. Close to about 500 people paid their VIP ticket to enjoy vineyard samplings and food from up and down the coast, and then, of course, Saturday was at the park, and local restaurants, you know, supplied food, and again, no incidences. Of course, Sunday was the auto show down there on Del Prado, and I have to admit, made me want to put some money towards my '68 Dodge Dart that's been parked in the garage. Some very impressive cars, very well-attended, and I have to commend Sherri Murphy for jumping into action when one of the vehicle owners decided to try to leave early. That inspired another vehicle owner to try to leave early. Sherri stood in front of this car idling. The guy was revving his engine. It was very tense. Of course, kids, strollers, I mean, it would have been a very, very dangerous situation to try to get a car out of Del Prado. I stood in front of the other car, and we waited for the deputy Jenny Anker to show up and basically put the vehicle owners back in their place. There was no incident once Jenny showed up, so I was hoping the chief was here, but hopefully Sergeant Rich Hemmell can relay that Jenny did an excellent job. We all know that she's a top sheriff in all of Orange County, and I'd just like to say, if Sherri Murphy hasn't been considered to be an employee of the month, I would seriously consider her, just on that action alone. She took charge, you know, maintained her calm in a very tense situation that, again, was, you know, would have been public safety, could have been disastrous. So, thank you very much, and a great job for the kickoff of summer.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Cindy Fleming, followed by Carol Fienza, Carol Fienza, and Tony Nelson, our final speaker.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Cindy Fleming. My husband and I are 30-year residents in Dana Point. What are we doing here, folks? Do the people that the taxpayers of Dana Point pay to look after their interests that have any intent to make policies that benefit the greater good for our taxpayers? In the last month since we were here, the people of Dana Point have been divided into two camps, those in favor of Measure H and those in favor of Measure I. Unfortunately, those who think that they're for the city council's measure too often don't understand what it's about. It looks like you've succeeded in pulling the wool over quite a few eyes. The backers of the city council measure put a big sign saying, "Save our parking." But wait, if that's the case, they most certainly cannot want Measure I. The council's Measure I that reduces parking from four to 10 stalls per thousand square foot of commercial use down to a flat two per thousand square feet across the board and counts parking on private property as shared parking even though it's not permanent and could always be redeveloped at lower parking counts? The council's Measure I that turns residential streets into paid parking lots? The city's council Measure I that tacked on "and parking improvement plan" to its title after hearing overwhelming complaints in this very chamber about the lack of a parking plan in their document? Tonight, the same council will vote on only the second shared parking agreement in the Lantern District Commercial Area. This agreement is for sharing 14 stalls. I guess it's better than nothing, but it's a joke as meaningful progress. These agreements are short-term at best, cancelable at any time after the first year. I read it, in case you didn't. They don't solve the long-term problems, and they're in no way a substitute for proper planning. If the Lantern District Commercial Area develops it as we hope, that property will eventually be redeveloped, and no amount of agreements matter when there's nothing to share. I've only addressed one of many of the city's proclaimed falsehoods in my three minutes here, but I've never seen such misrepresentation coming from a government agency. This city council is clearly counting on the citizens not taking the time to read the documents because anyone who does read them could never vote for the city's measure. And in the meantime, what does this accomplish for our city? Ask yourselves if you really believe that what you're doing and the way you're going about it is in the best interests of the long-term well-being of our town, because that is what we want. That is your responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carol Fienza. Did I pronounce your name right?
Well, you were close.
How do you pronounce your name?
My name is Carol Fienza.
Fienza, okay. Carol Fienza, please proceed.
Hi. Thank you, councilman and Mayor Tomlinson, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'm not going to take very much time, but I received a Google alert from Mayor Tomlinson on the, it was a Dana Point news article that you wrote. It's a terrific little editorial regarding the regulation of the hours going through Strand, the mid-gates at Strand Beach, and I thought it was a great article. It made me very happy reading it. It was a great compromise with the Coastal Commission to address, you know, this ongoing concern. 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM seemed like a reasonable amount of time, and the only thing that I would urge you is to continue with that same plan, regulating those hours that are consistent with the curfew at the beach, which is 10 o'clock. I hope that's right, 10 o'clock. And to limit the, to regulate the gates, encourage the Coastal Commission to regulate the gates. It's just so important. It's not, it's, to me, by not having those gates, by regulating the time to access the beach, but not having the gates, really invites kids to run down through that neighborhood, and those stairs at night are so dangerous. I just don't think it's a great idea, and I think I just would encourage the city to continue to work with the Coastal Commission to make that happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Final public comments speaker tonight is Tony Nelson.
I'm Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach, and we spoke earlier about the Doheny Village Plan and the update, and I just wanted to thank you for your vote on setting aside a special reserve for Doheny Village. I think that's a really good move, but I have to say I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the idea that it will be funded solely from funds from Town Center. That makes me really nervous because I sat here maybe a month or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, when one of your consultants was here, and she talked about the stream of revenue coming forward from Town Center, and I think we calculated that it was going to take 32 years to get the funding for Town Center back into the city coffers. So, if, as Mr. Kilibrew suggested tonight, it cost $18 million for Town Center, and we need about $10 million for Doheny Village, that means I'm waiting 16 years to be funded? Uh-uh. We don't want to wait that long. So, I appreciate the gesture, but I don't like the idea that it would come from Town Center. I think most of the funds from Town Center are probably going to be coming in the form of property taxes because most of it's going to be residential, and we all know that property tax is only 1%, and I think the city only gets a small portion of that. I'm not sure, something like 7%. Is that correct? So, you know, those are small dollars. The big dollars for Dana Point come from TOT, and none of that is going on in Town Center, so that kind of bothers me. So, I'd like to suggest some other... So I'd like to suggest some other areas where you might find some financing. One would be, you know, from the 40 or so million dollars that you get a year from other sources, primarily from TOT. Perhaps from operating surpluses. You know, if we don't spend everything that we get every year, we'll actually have some operating surpluses and we could put some of that money aside for Doheny Village. That's, you know, a good way to do it. That's what families do. Developer impact fees from Doheny Village itself. You know, maybe there are some deals that can be made with developers when they're coming in to develop a large parcel. Maybe we can say, hey, maybe you can do part of this road at the same time. I'm not sure exactly how that works, but Cindy can tell us. And also, if we want to look for money, there was a $3.6 million sale of land from Capo Beach. So that would keep the funds from Capo Beach in Capo Beach, which I think would be a good idea. The last thing I wanted to mention is I'm concerned about the type of accounting for Doheny Village because earlier in comments, Mr. Kilibrew talked about the costs for Town Center only being the construction costs, only the improvements. But I have a Doheny Village Plan update that shows all kinds of costs that have nothing to do with construction. So I just want to make sure if we're doing the accounting for Doheny Village versus Town Center, that we have the same rules. You know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So if Doheny Village includes, you know, economic analysis, all kinds of planning, traffic studies, EIR, traffic engineers, even materials, meals, and advertising, then I'd like to see the same, you know, whatever we do for Town Center, I think we should do for Doheny Village. I don't want you to be saying, oh, it's only 18 million for Town Center, when actually if you put all the planning costs in and all of the EIR and all of these other things that are in the Doheny Village Plan, I think it would be a much bigger number. So either way, but let's be on an even playing field because I know people are going to be comparing the cost of Town Center and Doheny Village and I just want to make sure we're apples and apples on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, here. I'd like to address Ms. Fleming. She comes in to every meeting and I kind of take, I kind of take, you know, offense to her coming in saying, "We're pulling the wool over our constituents' eyes," when they just had a court judgment against them for using, you know, false and misleading statements. I mean, that's a little offensive to me. You make the point that we have Measure H versus Measure I people. You brought Measure H. Measure I doesn't change Town Center plan at all. And so I sit here and I listen to this over and over and we brought up a point that we thought there was some misleading information being given to the signature gathering process. And now I think you're seeing that. You're seeing the division of people because there are people from Measure H that signed the ballot that are no longer supporting it. And I take offense to you coming in here every weekend, or every week, that we have a meeting and saying these things to us when, quite frankly, you know, the parking plan, we do have a plan. Nelson Nygaard gave it to us. We're trying to follow it. You brought it up about our 14 spaces that we're going to be voting on tonight. That's part of our plan to use the unused spaces in Town Center. That's part of the plan. Okay? And to say that that is not a plan, I'm not exactly sure where you're coming from that. And you come in here every two weeks or four weeks, whenever we're meeting, and say the same thing over and over. Measure H started this. We're just trying to make sure that the people are well-educated on what's going on. Measure I is not confusing on any level. It was what's voted on and agreed to by the people of Dana Point over 30 public meetings. The confusion is in Measure H, where it does actually change the plan. And I'd just like to keep that out there on the record. Thanks.
Okay, I jumped the gun a bit. So Madam Clerk, can you please reread the title of the ordinances, just because I've forgotten already, so go ahead.
I already did it, so we're good.
Okay, she did. Okay. So I believe it was item 19, that's the first.
Rowan, item number 24.
All right, I stand corrected. Item 24.
Oh, 24.
Okay, do we have, Mr. Shakavis, any staff reports?
We do. If the council indulges me, I'd like to tee this one up for Ursula and Mr. Kaufman. Primarily Ursula to give the staff report. Last week was one of the most rewarding periods of time in my over 25, 26 years of public service in that six, seven months ago, the city council unanimously directed the staff to put the litigation behind us and resolve our issues with the Coastal Commission via settlement. After five to six years of litigation, I was concerned that we would be able to do that. Having said that, the council put together a great team and I was happy to participate in, but watch. They hired Mr. Kaufman, who's one of the finest, if not the finest, coastal attorneys in the state. And we put together a team and council provided us direction throughout the negotiation process and while frustrating at times, both sides put aside their differences and compromised. I think what you have in the settlement that was unanimously approved last week is a process. A process where hours, responsible hours, that there was a lot of give and take, collaborative effort, compromise, what have you, that are consistent, as pointed out early by Ms. Fienzi, with other beaches up and down the coast. I wasn't sure we were going to get there, but we did. There's also a process identified in there for the HOA to request gates and a timeframe that if those deadlines are met, to have a timely hearing before the Coastal Commission to consider those gates. So again, I can't tell you how excited and pleased I was because during this process, we saw a number of things happen. You know, when you really take a step back and look at the Coastal Commission, the city, we have far more in common as far as being stewards of the coast when you look at our commitment to water quality, beach access, our preservation of natural resources through the Nature Interpretive Center. And I have to tell you, last week, we started on Thursday and a lot of credit to Ms. Luna Reynosa because she worked very diligently and collaboratively to come up with a vacation rental ordinance that was unanimously approved. She spoke, I think, as a result of her hard work for about 35 seconds. And it was unanimously approved, I believe some commissioners called it a model ordinance that other municipalities up and down the coast should consider. And I got the sense they encouraged their staff to take, to promote what Dana Point is doing relative to creating access through vacation rentals. Then Ms. Luna Reynosa teed it up for Friday, which I, candidly, I was just amazed that it all came together the way it did. Unanimous vote, I think I spoke for 55 seconds. Unanimous vote and because of the effort and the commitment of this council and the hard work of Mr. Kaufman, it was unanimously approved and then they called. And interestingly, that agreement had the support of surf rider, Sierra Club, and Coast Keepers. And quite candidly, I don't think that's ever happened before. So again, it was a tremendous effort, but again, they supported a settlement agreement that agreed to hours in concept, well, agreed to hours and provided a process through the CDP and that's why we're here before you this evening, is to, we've already initiated the process for implementing that settlement agreement. Tonight is another important step moving forward by having this hearing for this coastal development permit. And again, rather than saying no to the gates, in the settlement agreement, there is a process, nothing's guaranteed, for the HOA to request those gates through the LCPA process. So again, I, very, very professionally gratifying and I want to thank the city council for letting me in part of it, but hiring Steve Kaufman and the other people that made up the team. So again, I think we're in a very good place and my hope is that the community will embrace and support the settlement agreement and embrace and support the hours that were outlined and are before the council this evening. So with that, Ursula, would you give a staff overview of what's before the city council?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. Not sure if I can do 35 seconds, but.
We have 55.
In November of 2015, the city council approved coastal development permits 15-0021 and an amendment to ordinance 13.04 to address hours of operation and gated access to certain parks and trails of the headlands. Subsequent to that approval, coastal development, the permit was appealed to the Coastal Commission. Since the appeal, city and coastal commission staff have worked collaboratively on acceptable modifications to the original approval of the CDP to include designated hours of operation for the strand access areas as follows. Strand Vista Park, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. South Strand Switchback Trail, 24 hours per day. Strand Beach Park, Strand Revetment Trail, 24 hours per day. Central Strand Beach Access, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. And Mid Strand Beach Access, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This amendment to the CDP would delete the city's previous approval of gates in connection with the mid-strand beach and central strand beach access while temporarily permitting the existing gates to remain in a completely locked open position. Staff recommends that the city council adopt this subject CDP as well as hold a first reading of the proposed ordinance to set modified hours of the operation for Strand Vista Park and access trails of the headlands to delete the previous approval of gates at the central and mid-strand access trails. With that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing done, we'll move.
Mr. Mayor, just one very quick question. The recommended action this evening, Mr. Shakavis, Ms. Luna Reynosa, is fully consistent with the executed settlement agreement, which the commission approved at its, at its meeting last week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, that agreement was approved unanimously by this council?
Yes, sir.
Within the past 30 days, as I recall?
Yes, sir.
And executed by you after that, after that approval?
Yes, sir.
So today, we are really implementing an agreement that's been executed and is in its performance phase?
That's correct. And it was unanimously approved by the California Coastal Commission.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
And there are questions from council? Hearing done, we'll open up the public hearing portion of this matter. Madam Clerk? Okay, we have a number of speakers this evening. The first will be Rick Erkenoff, filed by Tim Lindenfelsner, and then filed by Christine Lindenfelsner.
Good evening, council. Again, Rick Erkenoff, City of Dana Point. I'd just like to congratulate this council and staff for their hard work. It's been a very contentious six years, albeit civil. I think that all parties to this issue have remained strong in their conviction, but from the Surf Rider Foundation point of view, I'm the chapter chairman for South Orange County, have been for getting close to 10 years. It's kind of hard to find a replacement with all these charged issues that we deal with. I'm looking forward to the community having the opportunity to go before the Coastal Commission, potentially get a coastal development permit, and we'll see how those cards fall. The Surf Rider Foundation, again, always maintain that position. Just go to the commission, ask them what you want, put it in writing, and hopefully get your approval. I think the benefits to the, to the community, to the public through the settlement, of course, is way beyond just the access to the beach in that area. The trail, interconnectivity, I think is going to be a real benefit. It's going to be wonderful to have loop trails in there. Of course, the funds that are going to go to the Ocean Institute for the educational program, I think is great, you know, and I really feel that a part of Dana Point that really gets overlooked is that headland reserve area. I mean, it is just fabulous. You know, three to four times a week, I take a walk up the Switchback Trail and go cross that headland and, you know, to literally be able to see a Californian gnat catcher, osprey, red-tailed hawks, I mean, all these amazing creatures that, believe it or not, can survive in that, in that little small space of Escha. You know, there's bobcats, there's creatures there that you just can't believe can exist in that plot of land. So, you know, as surf rider and Sierra Club and Coast Keeper fought against the development in the original state, I think what we got here for the city and for the public is something that truly is a gem and I would say that, that a lot of people look past that within the city and it's really a treasured wilderness park, I'll call it. But again, thank you to this council for, for dealing with issues that were past council's direction and to the city manager for really making this happen and I hope that this will be codified tonight and we'll look forward to how the HOA deals with the commission going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tim Lindenfelsner, did I pronounce that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Strand Beach. Thank you, Mayor Tomlinson, a council member, for allowing me to speak. I'm also a surf rider supporter and all the thing the previous speaker talked about, the beautiful vistas, walking down the Switchback during the daylight hours, seeing bobcats, et cetera, et cetera. Makes a lot of sense, agree 100% with that. The issue I have is the times that we've agreed to and I understand it's been a big compromise and I appreciate all the work that's been done, but I want, I wanted to, and I put in your pack, I wanted the council member and the mayor to see what it actually looks like. I mean, what is going on at night on the beach? Whose rights are we trying to protect? I mean, if you look in your pack, you'll see the first, this is what the gate looks like when you first walk up to it. It's pitch black. I don't think you're seeing any bobcats, any vistas, any ocean. You're seeing nothing. You're seeing blackness. This is the Switchback Trail. You can see a dark person walking down the sidewalk and there's absolutely no lights at all as you walk up there. It's just pitch, pitch blackness. And this, these pictures were taken last Friday at 8:30 p.m. It was actually a half moon out that night. This is, this is one of the, there's three crossings, street crossings you have to make as you walk through the mid-strand access. And this is a residence here and this is a dark street, a car has to come around the corner so that, you know, people will be walking down, cross that street and neighbors will have to come down. And then when you finally get down there, you finally make it down through all that darkness, past three streets, dark streets, and this is, this is what you see. That's the ocean right there. This is last Friday, 8:30 p.m. It's pitch black. I'm, for the life of me, I can't imagine what you need to be down at the beach for when it's dark. This is the revetment as you, as you walk. You've got steep rocks that drop off on this side, you've got the residence on this side. And so I don't get what's, why the gates, why the hours from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I guess what I'd like to, in closing, I would like to urge the councilmen and the city to aggressively seek the gates, at least for now, to match, synchronize with the 10:00 a.m. to 5, or the 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then going forward, I know that the city lost the argument with the nuisance argument trying to get a more restrictive gate. I'm wondering down the road, is if the, if the data supports, if there is some problems, some troubles, some nuisance, can we reapply to getting more restrictive hours like we all adopted the last meeting, which was sunrise to sunset, one hour before sunrise and one hour, you know, after sunset? Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Christine Lindenfelsner, followed by John Summers and Hal Ridge-Bryce.
Dear Honorable Mayor John Tomlinson and council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you again for all of your tireless efforts in the solution to the strand beach access. We appreciate that. We feel your frustration. We have another letter we entered on behalf of 20 families in the strand. The current settlement with no gates and 24 access, along with the proposed benches on the revetment, is not acceptable for residents without protection. There is 24 access and a furniture on either side of the neighborhood and surf rider and the media are trying to vilify us and it makes us a target. There's people, when they come down and we try to tell them to stay on path, they say things to us. It's not comfortable, we don't feel safe. And the beach is pitch black, rocky, dangerous, and not patrolled and the surrounding parks all close at sunset. So we're only talking about dark through the neighborhood. Is there any way that we can get assistance in patrolling our neighborhood? We're hearing that the police can't come in our neighborhood because it's a We're hearing that the police can't come in our neighborhood because it's a private neighborhood. Well, it's no longer a private neighborhood. It's public property through those streets. Can they walk through the sidewalk? Can they check the revetment? Can they check the accessways? We just don't want it out that, hey, you can do whatever you want in the strand. You can go down that beach, the county doesn't care, it's pitch black. That's not going to make our community feel safe, and something will happen. People do things at the beach that they wouldn't do in the Ralph's parking lot, and if we let that continue, they'll be doing that in the Ralph's parking lot. So we appreciate what you're doing, and we just really hope that you can help us find a way to patrol the neighborhood that's sort of more visibility. When the, when people see the CHP on the 73 toll road, they all stop. When they see police, they know we mean business. So we just want you to work with the county and see if you can protect us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next is John Summers, followed by Hal Bryce.
Thank you, Mayor, councilman.
Yeah, basically, we're 32-year Dana Point residents, me and my wife, and we're in favor of what all the strands residents, what they want. We've been to the meetings with Sanford Edwards, the developers, before them and all that. They've got the side access. We think that it was a great improvement over the original walkway down. They got the switchback walkway on the other side. That's plenty. The residents have a right to their privacy. We believe they have a right to have controlled gates and controlled times in the center of their community. That's, I just support what they're saying. I would want the same thing if I was a member of that community.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Bryce.
Mayor Tomlinson, councilors, I'm Hal Bryce. I live in the strand. I was the probably second house occupied in the strand in 2010, after a five-year building process. And I know you guys are feeling like right now, you just want to let's, I know you're talking, but really I know what you're feeling is, when can we get out of here and go to dinner? Because you just want to get this thing over with that's been going on for six years, right? And I think that, you know, everybody has put in a lot of time. I know Doug and Pat have lived this thing for a long, long time. I've talked to both of them lately. I just have a couple of questions. Is that all right? 10 to 5 are hours in concept only, are they not? With no gates?
No, those are the hours that were included in the settlement agreement.
But with no gate?
That's correct.
That's a concept.
But, no, 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 no. The hours were approved in the settlement agreement, and we were going to bring it forward on a CDP, which is before the council tonight.
Right.
Also included in the settlement agreement is a process whereby the HOA can apply or request the gates be improved.
Right.
Included in that is a specified timeline for that application to be made based upon a request of the HOA, and then it will be heard by the Coastal Commission with another prescribed period of time. So again, there's a very definitive process to get those in. Where we landed on with the hours was because it was a compromise, and it was based upon state beach and other state assets.
Totally understand that. I don't think anybody in the strand, none of the residents, either ones here tonight representing the letter, no one expects those to be closed all the time, and no one expects, you know, that there shouldn't be hours. But what I'm saying is, five years ago when this started, the whole issue was the developer, who is not us, by the way. The developer doesn't live in the community. The developer doesn't own a lot in the community he's going to build a house on. The developer is going to be gone, and it's going to be us that'll be left. And we're going to be living with the consequences of his attitude and the trouble he caused for the rest of the time that we live there, if you understand what I'm saying. So conceptually, what we're dealing with here is we have, I don't know what we call it, they're going to be fake hours, because in essence, the gates will be open all the time until we apply. Five years ago, the whole thing started because that was the process then, and Sanford did not want to apply for a permit, and so that's where all this came from. Am I not correct? Isn't that right? He did not want to apply, he did not want to apply for that permit because he was afraid he would lose it, and that's where all the lawsuits came from, from what I understand. So here we are standing here with basically imaginary hours, if you'll look at it like that, because anybody can walk in there any time of the day. We have a guy in a golf cart. It's a bit too much time letting Doug talk on my minutes, isn't it? But we have a guy in a golf cart, but basically, you can't possibly control it. The other night about 11:30, I was walking to my next-door neighbor's house, and I saw a couple of guys walking down the street in front of me, and, you know, I went over to talk to them, because they were not where they're supposed to be, following the path up, and we wound up having a bit of an altercation, you know, because I told them they weren't supposed to be there, it got kind of heated, and you think, well, everybody in Dana Point, I read the police log, you guys read the police log, stuff happens, right? We understand that. However, in our situation, it's dark, we have no police presence. I have never seen a policeman in five years on the revetment. I have never seen a policeman on the trails. The city is supposed to patrol with your officers, the revetment, because that's city property, but the beach is the county beach. So here we have basically access to a beach that's closed between 10:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. with gates that are never going to be there, because, I mean, what do you think the chances are? May Mr. Kaufman can answer this. What are the chances are of them approving the application that we make?
Can you please wrap up your comments?
What has been your indication? I mean, you told me that there's a better indication than before. Do you think we'll have, do we have a fighting chance?
I can't, I can't commit for the California Coastal Commission.
I know, but you've been talking to them.
Well, I understand that, and the fact that there's a process included in the settlement agreement means that they're willing to have the discussion before the commission. But again, I can't commit for the commission, but the fact is, it goes back to that compromise where both parties said, and so again, the settlement agreement is, and my hope is that the community embraces the settlement agreement and works with the city to implement it, so...
I think what happens is the settlement agreement ends the city's responsibility and hands it to the homeowners' association, which, as you know, does not exist. It's basically the developer is the homeowner. We don't have a formal homeowners' association. We have nobody. So what we're dealing with here is phantom hours with no gates, complete darkness, no police patrols, and something is going to happen. I'm just telling you that. It's going to happen.
Can you wrap up your comments, sir?
That's it, that's all I want. Thanks.
Final speaker is Petit Mahor, is that correct?
My name is Priti Mather. I've lived in strands.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
I don't mean to interrupt you, ma'am, just hold on for a second.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Priti Mather. We were one of the first people to start construction in strands. We own three properties in Dana Point, and we love living in strands, we love looking at people at the beach. I support and urge City of Dana Point to urge Coastal Commission closing the gates with the 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. or 5:00 a.m. I did have, and there are two other access points to the beach on the sides, so they don't need to, public does not need the center access point. I did have an incident at the strand, and I have over 20 photos to show you. There were two people at strands through front of my house, and I felt extremely, extremely unsafe. They were very, very drunk or high, and I felt extremely, extremely scared. I can show you those photos. There is enough access for the public to go through to the beach. We don't need any of the public going to the beach at dark, but that's a side issue. We pay enough property taxes, the residents of strands, for the City of Dana Point to put enough security for residents of strands. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Mrs. Mather, if I could, just, when you see that type of activity where you feel threatened or danger, call the police.
I did contact the guard, and the guard was supposed to contact the police.
But I need you to contact, if you witnessed it, we need you to call 911.
Okay.
Because you saw an alleged crime, and we need to respond to that.
All right. I have over 24.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your comments. Since there's no more public comments, I'll close the public hearing on this matter and move it to the council for comments. Any comments, councilmembers? Yeah, Mr. Olivera?
I'll start. I want to repeat what one of the speakers mentioned, and that I'm kind of proud of that it's been recognized, that in a short time, this council has made a very distinction, very different distinction from prior councils, in that we have worked to get away from suing everybody, or winning or losing, doesn't matter, to where we actually talked to people face to face, and through some very experienced individuals that did these conversations, we have reached an agreement, and as was mentioned earlier, that the Coastal Commission agreed unanimously to start this process. So we made the first steps. It's a two-step process. So I'm very proud that we have done this without having getting too much legal recommendations. There have been still a lot of comments that I completely agree with, that we haven't quite got to yet. I've always been a supporter that if we do have gates, the gates have got to match the hours of the beach. I would not support going down into the residential area and not be able to get onto the beach. The county controls the beach. They have to go through the strands park, which also would have some hours. So I hope that our step two in this process is as successful as we have had with step one. So I appreciate those who spoke on behalf of trying to have some sort of control over people getting in. With that said, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the City Council for the City of Dana Point, California, approving amendments to the coastal development permit, CDP 15021, regulating hours of operations of strands access beach areas, including but not limited to Strand Vista Park and the beach accessways at the Dana Point headlands. Mr. Turner, do you want two separate motions?
One motion is fine.
And adopt, hold a first reading, introduce and hold a first reading for an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, amending section 13.04.030 of Dana Point Municipal Code relating to hours of use in public parks and facilities, including strand access areas in the Dana Point headlands, and repealing City of Dana Point Ordinance Number 10-05.
Mr. Schuffel?
Yeah, I would second Councilman Oviedo's very extensive motion.
Thank you, sir. Okay, please go ahead, and any other further council comments before we take a vote?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff, Dana Point staff, Coastal Commission staff. You know, I was up there when the vote was taken on Friday, and to see, you know, when we first got involved in this, I'd heard horror stories, that this is going to be one of the most painful things you've ever been through, and it wasn't easy. There was nothing easy about it, but it's amazing what can happen when two agencies come together and really, really have the will to resolve a conflict, especially something that's been going on as long as this was. And I got to tell you, it was actually somewhat of a pleasure to work with them, and Mr. Kaufman was very instrumental in that. So I want to thank our staff, but I do want to point out one thing. The Coastal Commission staff actually paused. We had Chair Kinsey and Commissioner Cobb actually paused to thank the Dana Point City Council for their leadership in this. And I want to let people know, if you've ever been to these meetings, things like that don't happen very often. And it was really because of all the work that our staffs were able to do together. We know that's where all the heavy lifting got done. And so I really want to make sure our staff knows how much we appreciate what they did. Coastal understands how much we appreciate what they did, and that we keep moving forward on this. I mean, this is an exciting day. So with that, I'd just like to say, I support the motion.
Okay. I'd like to publicly acknowledge Mr. Kaufman for his learned, very able legal skills. Without you, Mr. Kaufman, we would have been a lot farther in this process, so thank you very much, sir. And I'd like to also congratulate Mr. Miller for being the council's member to go up to the hearing and participate on this, so thank you very much, and I wanted to thank my fellow staff members, our fellow council members, for participating in this as well. Any other comments before we take our vote? All right, gentlemen, please cast your vote. Next is the unfinished business portion of our agenda. Do we have a staff report for item number 25, Mr. Shotkevys?
Yes, Mayor Tomlinson. Item number 25 is the second in a series of actions by this council to deal with weeds in town that haven't been cleared, and lots that haven't been cleared. So tonight, before you, the recommended action is that the City Council hear any objections regarding weed abatement, and thereafter adopt one of the two resolutions as follows: a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dana Point overruling objections and proceeding with weed abatement, or a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, hearing no objections and proceeding with the weed abatement. Either one of those is a function of the testimony that you received tonight, so we would recommend that you receive any public comments or any objections, and then proceed from there.
Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll move that resolution of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, overruling, no, wait a second, which one would be? A resolution, second one, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, hearing no objections and proceeding with the weed abatement. Second. Please cast your vote. Item number 25 passes with a 5-0 vote. Next item is on the agenda is new business. Mr. Shotkevys, is there a new, any staff report on number 26, approval of lease agreement?
Of course, of course, there is. What I'd like to do at this time is ask Ursula and Cindy to provide a staff report, but before I do that, I want to thank Mrs. Nelson for her tireless efforts to work with individual property owners to secure these leases. She's making very good progress, and she has a number of lease arrangement that she's in the process of negotiating. But again, Cindy, thank you very much for your efforts. Ursula, could you, or Cindy?
I will defer to Cindy for this.
Okay, Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of the City Council. I am pleased to present to you a lease this evening for the Taco Bell Commercial Center, which is at the north end of Del Prado and Pacific Coast Highway. The property owner, H&amp;K Takanaga Enterprises, has been extremely cooperative and is willing to lease us 14 spaces in the evening hours between 5:00 p.m. and midnight. We have the ability to gain two additional spaces. They want to first see how things are going and see how their tenants are reacting to the lease, but he's pretty optimistic that we'll be able to get the additional two spaces. The rental amount is $30 per space per month. As with the previous lease and with most of my conversations with owners in the district, they are asking first for a one-year initial term, just so they can assess the impact on their tenants, but they all have the intention of entering into the five-year renewal period. And in this case, they're very open to an open lease in five-year increments. They have asked for a 2% or greater of CPI increase for each renewable term of the lease, and the city will have very little responsibility for the parking spaces. The owner will maintain the lot. We may share in the prorated cost of restriping of the lot if and when it's needed. They will maintain everything else, the cleaning, the lighting. The city will provide liability insurance, as we did in the other lease, and Brad and I are actually meeting on the site tomorrow, if you approve the lease this evening, to meet with the owner to talk about the placement of the signage, so that it's clear that it is shared public parking. So with that, I would appreciate a recommendation by the City Council, an approval by the City Council. Thank you.
Mr. Schuffel?
Just a brief question, and thank you for your hard effort on this. How many, how many shared parking spaces do we need in your estimation?
In total, in the Lantern District?
Yeah, I mean, you've been working on it for seven months. How many of you have been negotiating? What sort of is your target number? We have maybe 16 here. Is it 19, or is it 50, or is it, how many do we need to handle the shared parking burden as you see it in the next...
as you see it in the next one, five, 10, 10 years?
Well, in the immediate term, we have what I would consider some hotspots that we're trying to deal with, with the recent opening of The Craft House. Luciana's is extremely busy. Coastal Kitchen is opening soon, so I was pleased that we were able to negotiate the lease at this particular location. We have some other parking problems cropping up at Two Left Forks, because they're extremely popular and busy, and I'm talking to the owner about that. So I think initially, the impact has been manageable, and I think we're making good progress with some of these other lease negotiations that I've been involved in, that I think for the near term can adequately serve the demand that we're seeing.
So how many? I'm just trying, I don't want to pin you to a particular, I'm just kind of curious. Because I go by, there's valet parking at all the new restaurants, they're great restaurants, and there's nothing wrong with valet parking. It's just that it suggests to me that there's probably some need for shared parking in these areas. And I'm trying to figure out what that number is, because over seven months, I see 16. So is that, is that 30, is it 50, is it? I'm not trying to pin anybody down.
It would be two per thousand of occupied commercial space would be the target number, less onsite parking associated with that commercial space. So we haven't done the calculation, but the next time, so we need more. Next time we bring a lease agreement before you, we can do that calculation. It would require us to look at occupied commercial space in the town center district boundary, calculate that at two per thousand, less existing onsite parking. Because that is what has been shown in the studies, that at peak hour in these commercial districts, it's typically about 1.8 spaces occupied and really successful ones, we're targeting two per thousand of occupied commercial space.
But if I could add to, and much to Mrs. Nelson's credit, and with her past as Deputy City Manager, Director of Community Development for the City of Santa Ana, she's grasped and dealt with situations far worse than this. Having said that, she's working at some very innovative ideas. She's working with a valet service to see if we can get better shared parking on some of the lots down there amongst the restaurants. We're collaboratively working with Uber and Lyft to try and find, because quite candidly, I think in the last nine months, you're seeing more and more people utilize Uber and Lyft as a safe way, not only of getting to and from a restaurant or a night spot, but also relieving them of having to find parking, and I know in Laguna Beach, for paying parking, paying for parking. So again, I think Mrs. Nelson is drawing upon some of her past expertise and looking at innovative ways to try and meet the interim demand. At the same time, I know, we're also trying to find interim demand, so that we have an economic base that can eventually support a parking district. But until such time as we have that base that can support it, and I think candidly, looking back, it's always been a discussion about finding interim parking strategies, until such time as we have, you know, a base that can support it. So with that, I just want to let the council know that we're going to be coming back because of Cindy's efforts there. They're starting to come to fruition, and we're actually having dialogues with people who want to be a part of it, because they see the excitement that's going on and what it's doing for their businesses. Would you agree with that, Mrs. Nelson, based upon what you're saying?
Most definitely. I mean, at first, property owners were a little reticent to even consider a lease with us, and in the last few months, they're much more open to the consideration, and I think appreciating that what's good for them and is good for others and good for the city. So definitely seeing some movement in terms of property owner interest in the last few months. So that's very encouraging. I think people are appreciating that there's new restaurant opportunities, and they're seeing some positive change, and they want to be a part of it. They'd like to be a part of the solution. It's just working out those individual stories for each of the properties that is time-consuming. But I think over the course of the next two, three months, you know, we, it'd be great to get another 50 spaces out there. I think that's achievable.
Okay, that was, that's all I was looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Schuffel. Any other council comments? Mr. Olivera?
Yeah.
Questions, because we haven't done the public comments portion?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, public speakers tonight? Okay, we have two requests to speak. First will be Bob Thiel, followed by Buck Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Tomlinson and council members. My name is Bob Thiel. I'm a resident of Dana Point. The lease that I heard about tonight is an excellent way for the city to begin on this acquisition of converting private spaces to public spaces. Other than street parking, public parking is nearly nonexistent, and this situation doesn't help to populate the sidewalks. On the other hand, the creation of more public parking throughout the Lantern District is essential to putting residents, shoppers, and visitors on the newly constructed sidewalks and a nice environment that we have like in Del Prado. And as important here is, public parking in the Lantern District will mitigate overflow of retail automobile traffic in the residential neighborhoods. And you've heard all of the noise and complaints from those folks and their perceived issue of parking problems. I hear complaints that the city is doing nothing to deal with the Lantern District parking, and that's not true. We've had conversations with councilpersons and city staff, and you've asked us to talk with our folks among the Lantern District Alliance, and you've encouraged us to help with the parking matter, and we have. I am a member of the Lantern District Alliance. We're a stakeholder group, as you know, and we support the city's version of Town Center, and we oppose Measure M. The LDA has strong relationships with the Lantern District merchants and landlords who want to see the city prosper, and who also oppose Measure M. It's through these relationships that over the past month or so, we've worked to identify approximately 150 parking spaces that can become public parking spaces. Presently, we have approximately 116 such parking spaces in nine different locations, and they're in various degrees of agreement to lease their spaces. Some are tentative agreements and conversations, they like the idea. Quite a few more said that they'll do a letter of intent. We said, we've read the city's lease agreement, and we encourage them to move forward with the lease agreement and modify it to their particular needs. We're coordinating these efforts with Cindy Nelson, and she brings these matters to conclusion for the City Council. The city's on the right path with this type of parking solution. The city's Lantern District parking program incorporates numerous solutions to create public parking. Yet Measure M throws it out and instead keeps the existing suburban parking standards, and that's the wrong way to go. Some people complain that there is a parking problem, and our approach is that if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hill?
I previously introduced. There's a big misunderstanding about what is Measure H and what is Measure I. And I think Councilman Mueller's remarks exemplify that. He attacked Ms. Fleming, saying she was misinformed and not saying the truth. You said that Measure I, the city measure, did not make any changes in the Town Center Plan from 2006. That's not at all the case. There are massive changes, similar to ones we made, but going the opposite direction in Measure H. The new parking program, which you all approved on September 15th, is radically different than was envisioned in the Town Center Plan. The Town Center Plan relied on the then-existing zoning codes. So for retail, it was four per thousand; for restaurants, it was 10 per thousand; for a one-bedroom unit, it was 1.7 per thousand. The new changed Town Center Plans, which you all signed off on in September and has yet to be approved by the Coastal Commission, has those numbers radically hacked. The non-residential parking is now two per thousand versus four or 10, depending upon the nature of it. Offices were also in the range of four. In the residential, you're one for a one-bedroom versus 1.7. So what's happened is you've lowered the parking requirements dramatically, and you say you're going to improve public parking. I agree completely with this leasing program in terms of the idea of getting public parking. It's a good step forward. But in the Town Center Plan, the main action for the city at the end of that, 2006, was take this district, and there was a big map of the district with a bullseye on it, which your renewal of the plan crossed out, said, take this district from Golden Lantern to Blue Lantern, and find a permanent, long-term solution to the parking problems. This area is going to develop greatly, and we want it to develop greatly, but the success of it requires adequate parking. Businesses cannot exist without adequate parking. Despite cutting the parking, I think the number is about 60% reduction in your new plan, not the original plan. And if anybody wants to see this, it's on our website, www.savedanapoint. There's a complete issue of the new Measure M Plan, which was first approved in September, and there's a complete Measure H Plan, Measure I and H, I'm sorry, Bob got me. So look at it. The details are all there, and you can see every change that was made. Thank you. So one last point about this leasing. Who should be paying that lease? Right now, it's the general public, the general taxpayers that are paying it. I think it should be some special parking district where the beneficiaries, these restaurants just named? The other thing is, those numbers allow tandem parking, stack parking, and valet parking. That is a much more crowded function that is not clear the public will want to use. So we ought to really look at the changes between the two measures, and the council ought to be frank in communicating accurately those, not as you just did early in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, we are done with public comments, Mr. Schuffel.
Can I move the recommended item?
Second.
Okay, it's been regularly moved in second, if the item be moved, please cast your vote. Mr. Miller, go ahead.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Hill's comments. My understanding of this plan was that this is going to be a park once and walk district. It's always been designed to be that. This is not a change to try and reduce the parking. It's to come up a parking plan that's consistent with a park once and walk district. Okay? So when I say we're not changing the plan, there was really never a parking plan involved, included in this. There was comments, it's a suburban parking design. It was not the intent of this, in my opinion. You come back and you say, we're supposed to provide a large parking structure, but then, two seconds later, you say, who's paying for this public parking that we're trying to secure right now? Well, that's kind of contradictory to me, because who's going to pay for that parking structure? I mean, the city's going to have to pay for that one way or the other. Now, as we start to build out, maybe you're right. Maybe we will need a parking benefit district. Maybe we will. At this point, we don't. And so I think it's a little premature to start talking about that. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I think we may end up needing one. But I don't think this is the time for it. So that being said, I'll support the motion to approve.
Comment?
Mr. Olivera, please proceed.
I'd like to stay with just item 26 on our agenda. I noticed that in our discussion and the staff report, they're talking about approximately 1,000 parking spaces that are not utilized during the peak hours, and that much of the parking is located in private. And this item, or I said 24, item 26 is a means of making some of that private parking space public. The staff talked about, which this is a part of, that we're implementing parking strategies. And there was a couple of comments from staff about bringing this back, so I hope you can bring this back continuously at each council meeting, so that we continue to see the progress being made on our parking strategies. Even with, I think there's one comment was made with letters of intent, I hope that, since we as a council don't participate in the negotiations on real estate, and that's strictly the staff's purview, and they just bring to us the final agreement, and that's perfectly fine with me, I just hope that, I can just see a lot of time being used up trying to figure out which lawyers has the best lawyer to try and negotiate over one parking spot, and I hope we can narrow that down to, you know, we're talking $60,000 over 11 years, and I don't think that's a hard road to hoe. So I like the way the staff is going. I think this is a great, excellent start, and keep doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. I'd like to add my own comments. I thank you, Cindy Nelson, for your hard efforts in negotiating this. And I've heard some very interesting ideas tonight that I think have been floating around for a couple of weeks here now, Uber and Lyft. These are innovative solutions that are new to the scene, and I think they'll provide some relief, too, as people begin to recognize that these are good services to the community, and people can use them on their iPhones or their smartphones and pick up the app, and it's a very reliable service. I'm also encouraged by the fact that there is more parking that's maybe available out there, and I follow Mr. Olivera's comments, to please keep working on that, bringing us more options. And, you know, I had the opportunity to test some of the valet parking last week, and it worked very good. I got my car quickly, and the restaurants, they're working with this. So I think it's a great step forward. It's a great beginning, and I would urge everybody to cast their vote after. Mr. Feeks, are you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I also like to add my thanks to Cindy Nelson and Ursula for all the work you've done on this. This is obviously an excellent implementation of the parking strategy, and it really is improving the public parking. And so, again, I just want to thank you for what you're doing, and I said I'd be brief, so I will simply say I will support this motion. Thank you.
All right, time to cast your vote. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. There's any more public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to next item, staff reports. Mr. Shot Cavez?
Just a couple of things, Mayor Tomlinson, for the council and the community information. As council may be aware, I included a piece of correspondence in your mail last Thursday night. Subsequent to prior to me leaving for Santa Rosa for the Coastal Commission hearing, I became aware of an Assembly Bill 2772 on drug treatment programs. Because I didn't have, the hearing for it was today, and we didn't have time to get it on the agenda, I wrote a letter of support as the city manager, because I felt that this is something, and we need to closely follow legislation, but also support good legislation that helps us get our hands around sober living homes. So with that, I just wanted to mention that for the council, that I typically would put this on the city council agenda, but in this case, because of the timing, I submitted that. Two things. First of all, I want to thank the department heads, especially Mr. Kilibrew. I basically told Mr. Kilibrew late last fall that I'm going to be engaged in the settlement discussions, and I can say this now that Mr. Kaufman isn't here, but there were times when 11:30 at night, my wife would walk into my home office and say, who are you talking on the phone? I said, well, why Steve Kaufman? And she says, she grabbed the phone, okay, Steve Kaufman, what are you wearing? And he said, tacky, tacky, and a UCLA sweatshirt. And she had the phone back, and she said, Steve doesn't sound all that attractive. And I said, quite candidly, I don't, you know, anyway. Having said that, I want to thank the department head, Cindy Nelson, and Mike Kilibrew, because I'll tell you something, we have so much on our plate at this city hall. When you look at the amount of development activity, Town Center implementation, businesses opening up, public works planning, it's just amazing that we're able to get as much done as we do, but I really want to thank them, and I know Mr. Kilibrew's had a sore back lately, and I've been asking him to get rid of it, and I'm just waiting for him to say, you know, it's tough carrying the staff on my back. Mike, thank you very much for everything you do for the city. I really appreciate it, and it's nice having such capable people can do an outstanding job every day. You know, one of the things we picked up as part of our Coastal Commission negotiation processes, you know, the sentiment that, you know, there's no limit what you can accomplish if nobody cares about getting credit. And I have to tell you, this whole negotiation has been frustrating, but at the same time, a real grateful sense of accomplishment. But I think the credit goes to this city council and the California Coastal Commission. It really It really does, because we could not do what we did if we didn't have the respect, but the support of our respective boards. Just as we were getting negotiation instructions and directions, so was the Coastal Commission staff. And as Mr. Miller had articulated, rarely do you see on two days, but especially the last day, where Chair Kinsey and the commissioners all congratulated this city council for providing the leadership and direction to get this done. They also thanked Mr. Moore for being there as the council's representative at the hearings as a demonstration of this council's commitment to get this done. So again, I think all the credit goes to the two respective bodies for landing the plan and coming up with something that puts the past behind us. So with that, that completes all my comments tonight. You know, again, it's just been real rewarding two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Schott Caves. Mr. Munoz.
Well, I wouldn't have had any comments, but I would be remiss if I didn't thank the Fifth Marines Support Group for their support, or recognition, I guess. I'm sort of speechless on the whole thing. I was really taken aback with this very, very nice certificate. It's been an honor for me to get to be a city representative at their golf tournament every year, and it's particularly humbling to be recognized by that organization. So thanks to them, and thank you for letting me serve you.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. I'll move this now to council reports. Let's go with Mr. Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Munoz was receiving, they were giving the presentation, giving you that plaque. I couldn't see it from here, and so the first thing that went through my mind, because on my desk right here is the announcement for the Fifth Marines Combat Golf, and I was expecting a hand grenade to be tossed to you, followed by the pin. My comments, sitting here tonight was a very interesting night, based on the crowd that we had and the topics that we covered. And I'll zero in on two of them. We have a short debate on the money spent on our Town Center, Lantern District. I know, I can remember, if you want to talk about what did we spend on creating this endeavor, you may have to go back to 1990, when I was chairman of the Planning Commission, and we start talking about this. You may have to include Mr. Schoffel's time on the Planning Commission and the city council. So we've been doing this for almost 27 years. Then I hear that we shouldn't be spending money from a Capistrano Beach group, but on the other hand, I hear another Capistrano Beach group saying we'd better spend his equal amount of money on the Doheny Village. It's putting this council in a predicament of which side of the argument do we choose for trying to satisfy some of the people some of the time, but not all the people all the time. My hat's off to this council for the negotiations that we've been able to accomplish with the California Coastal Commission, for restoring our integrity in the community, for dealing with people and coming to solutions. Been quite proud of this. I've enjoyed my tenure on this council, and we've got a lot more things to do and to accomplish, and I'm looking forward to having with it. So with that, I'll be turning my meeting summary minutes into the city clerk following this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. Mr. Schoffel.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to notify everyone that the OC Fire Authority is going to be over at, I believe it's called Beachwood Estates over in Capo Beach, doing the free fire alarm program. So anybody that needs one will be available, they'll install it for you. They have 10-year batteries in them now, you can't take them out, so you should change your fire detector every, smoke detector every 10 years, and you don't need to replace the batteries anymore. So anybody interested in that, you can get a free one. If you live in Beachwood Estates, they'll be installing it for you this weekend. So with that, thank you, Ms. Nelson, for all your hard work on the parking. It's very much appreciated by this council, and I will turn in my meetings to the clerk.
Mayor Protem Biggs, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report, but I will turn in my list of meetings to the clerk at the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. My report, first of all, we have upcoming the 10th Annual Grand Prix Sport and Family Festival. It runs from Saturday, April 30th to Sunday, May 1st. Saturday, April 30th at 10:00 a.m., there'll be a 1K family fun run-walk in the Dana Point Lantern District. There's going to be on Sunday, the 1st, at 12:00 p.m., the Dana Point Grand Prix Sport and Family Bike Event. There's also just added a Flock of 80's concert, and I guess the theme of this is illuminate, light up the Lantern District Bicycle Parade of Lights, and that's Saturday, April 30th, 8:00 p.m. Mr. Fowler, did I miss anything on this?
We have so many great activities. Let me just cover a few of them for you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Brad. Mayor Tomlinson, you might want to reflect back on the car show again. I know you and your son got to pick out an award.
Oh, yeah, that was a great, great event. I mean, to see all the cars down there and all lined up and all the people that were down there, it was incredible. I'm thankful for the staff and city council for putting that together. What a wonderful event. I hope that continues next year. My son's 10, and he liked a lot of the cars there, and particularly the Ferrari, that was one of his favorites, and the Mustang, so.
Which one was the mayor's car?
I can't remember. There were so many awards given out, and I met the gentleman, he was a very nice gentleman.
39, Damar.
39, what was it?
Your judge.
Oh, that's it. There we go. That's it. Great event, and hope we put it on again next year. So thank you for those involved in that and all the hard work. July 17th already for next year? Great.
No, this year.
Oh, this year. Oh, we have another one. Okay, great.
And again, I didn't mean to cut Brad off, Mayor Tomlinson. No, I didn't. But I know Brad will put on another great event.
Wouldn't it be okay just two minutes, boss? Two minutes?
I'll cut the difference with you. Ursula needed 35 seconds, I'll give you 45.
He's waited all night.
Okay. So Saturday morning, you come out and you run the 5K Killer Cove Dana Run. You get to run from the Town Center down the harbor, and you get to run up Cove Road. So we're doing participative events this year, or you can just bring your family out and run the race course for the bike race at 10, and just do the 1K course right up there in the Town Center through the residential district. We've got on Del Prado, you've got a festival, you've got people out there with, we've got live music all day Saturday. You've got the professional bike races, including the two main pro events on Saturday afternoon. You've got Flock of 80's coming in, doing a major concert at 6:30 to 8:00. And then at 8:00, if you go down to the Dana Point Hardware Store before then, we'll give you safety lights for your bicycles for free, care of a psychological and the Dana Point Community Cycling Foundation, where you can decorate your bikes from Dana Point Hardware and ride up and down Del Prado while it's closed on Saturday night with your lights. So lots of fun. Sunday, we got the normal bike racing most of the day, and we're just going to have a great party out there. So come see the festival. Lots of family activities. Good weekend.
Thank you. I do have a final comment. Mr. Bell hosted on Thursday a meeting in Capistrano Beach. I had planned to attend, but unfortunately, my business sometimes, my office is in North Orange County, and sometimes business matters pop up where I'm not able to attend events. I only got short notice of it a day or two before, so I'm sorry I missed that meeting, but sometimes business doesn't allow me to go to meetings like that. I have to prepare well in advance for some meetings. I will turn in a list of my meetings to the city clerk. I would like to make one request, that the camera pan to the podium, and maybe we can get Mr. Evans there for one more round of applause, so. On that note, I will conclude this meeting, and the next regular meeting of the city council will be May 3rd, 2016, at 5:00 p.m. in the chambers here. So thank you, everybody, this evening.